Good afternoon. It's one of my guests, Chris.
Good morning.
This is John.
Yes.
I just wanted to welcome everybody. I missed you guys last week and we're back together. And Mayor is on a trade mission to Germany with the Brooklyn Meters. And I know he's doing some great work for us and he'll be back for the next meeting. But anyway, I talked to him before he left, so he was very excited about that. Because I'm sure he's going to do a trade talk for us. So we have a lot to accomplish this September. And the first one is something that I've been involved with is the President of the City of the Community of Asia. So we're ready to deliver them here. John Martin did such a great job at the US Marine Corps. We can send a lot of joy to the citizens.
Okay, great. Well, thank you guys for giving me a few minutes to share a really exciting story that you helped start many years ago with the subsea cables to come ashore at Virginia Beach. And then being part of a truly regional network, a regional initiative which is putting in that network ring. So I'm going to share a story that shows how your foresight really is making something happen that's going to put us on the worldwide map on digital infrastructure. And so you have a lot of materials in front of you. I'm just going to briefly go through some highlights of it. But I want you to know the background is we represent an organization called RVA 757 Connects. So it's Hampton Roads in Richmond, following this model of understanding that nearby cities don't compete in the 21st century, they collaborate to get great things done for both economies. And so that's what we're doing with RVA 757 Connects, building on big regional efforts that we've seen work across the country over the last four decades, five decades. Boston's 128, and North Carolina's Research Triangle, and California's Silicon Valley. So we call ourselves the 12th mega-region, Richmond and Hampton Roads, or we just call ourselves regional collaborators, or we call ourselves the innovation corridor, the I-64 innovation corridor. And together, we are stronger, working Richmond and Hampton Roads. And so we're igniting what we're calling a new corridor of innovation. And we have a really exciting board that's representative of about 75 CEOs from both markets, from the biggest companies, and college presidents and university presidents. And these are our six priorities. And we were very successful in advocating for I-64 to get widened between Williamsburg and the Richmond Airport. So construction starts this September, and it's going to take three or four years, but we're going to have three lanes all the way from Virginia Beach to Richmond, which is going to help both economies. And then we're working on becoming a global internet hub. We want to support the bike walk trails to get the Capital Trail to come all the way from Williamsburg to Virginia Beach, increase more passenger rail service, and support some of our Board of Directors initiatives like Jefferson Lab becoming a supercomputer center, and Dominion's Energy's offshore wind farm and so forth. And so this is what we're working on, and I'm going to share with you just a few minutes on becoming a global internet hub and the strategic plan that we put together. And some of my colleagues here, Ray White and Charlie Baum and Peter Wallace, were all on the committee with 62 other people to put this strategic plan together. And you have a copy of this plan in front of you. I'm just going to give you the highlights of it, starting with the what. And you guys know this from being so familiar with digital infrastructure, being on the forefront of it in the Hampton Roads market. But I'm just going to give you this hypothetical view of what a global internet hub looks like around the world. And it starts by understanding that at the base of it are all these independent networks that data flows on. And having a robust local network's really important, and then having a place to store the data. And so these are the data centers that are part of every global internet hub. But it's more than that. Having a fiber network ring really connects some of the major assets of a community. And kudos to you guys for being the early adopters and starting that South Side Network Authority. And talk about regional cooperation, that really is a defining moment. You guys have one here in Hampton Roads, or you're building one. Richmond doesn't have one, or plans for one. So just file that away. Another characteristic of a global internet hub is reliable power. Dominion Energy, 21% of its total power output goes to data centers across the state right now. And we have the reputation of being data center alley in large part with Loudoun County. And then IXP's, and this is an unsung hero of a global internet hub, but this is where the Ethernet connectors within data centers connect all those networks. Think about all those spider webs that get connected at certain points. In Richmond, we have what's called D-Kicks Exchange, and we have three different IXP locations, IXP's. Hampton Roads doesn't have an IXP. And so when you start to add up what Richmond has and what Hampton Roads has, you start to see this formula to go, oh, my gosh, together, we have all the components of a global internet hub. And the crowning one is what Virginia Beach brings to the table, the subsea cables. And I know you guys have talked a lot about that. But when you start to look at this as an international expert, the people that we hired, they went, gosh, we kind of knew about those cables in Virginia Beach, but we didn't know about these mammoth data centers in Richmond. Two data centers that are growing to be 3 million square feet each, QTS and Meta Facebook's facility. So when you put all this together, this is the map of a global internet hub, what it looks like. And again, only when you combine the assets of Richmond and Hampton Roads do you really see this picture emerge? And the consultants that we've hired that helped us with the plan are saying, oh, my gosh, this is a story here. You guys are an emerging global internet hub. And there are a lot of these around the country. There's a list that comes out every year, and we're determined to now get on that list because of the partnerships that we have between Hampton Roads and Richmond in working through this plan. And so we see these recognized leaders, and we want to be on this list shortly. Why do we want to be on the list? This gets to sort of our raison d'etre. This is all the benefits of being a hub and being a global internet hub. We need to attract the IT workforce. We are behind compared to other regions we compete against. And being a tech hub, and IT, tech workers come to places that are internet hubs to get the fastest access to the internet, lowest latency, and have the most advanced digital platforms work. So companies move to locations that have this robust digital infrastructure. And when you have that kind of infrastructure, you get a lot of competition, and you start to see some really good pricing when it comes to internet services. And so we really feel like building out our network and having it grow faster and faster is going to bring these kind of benefits and support some of your big goals of being a smart city, or getting ready to connect autonomous vehicles, or thinking about just the ways that you guys can be more efficient as a municipal government in connecting one government center to another government center and asset. So this list goes on and on. But I think one of the biggest things to think about is every business is in the digital space now. And this is the World Economic Forum, and they projected out, looking out into the future, that 70% of the new value that's going to get created by the business community around the world is going to be digitally enabled. And so we've got to have a robust digital infrastructure and future-proof our community. We are going to have a decided advantage investing in our digital infrastructure. And I'm bringing Kohl's to Newcastle here, because y'all knew this before anybody else really getting those subsea cables going and now getting that the network ring going. So we feel like this is going to become more and more of an economic development advantage. And this model that we're seeing emerge is this is the way we're going to attract companies of the future and the way we're going to attract IT workers of the future. And companies are going to be searching for that, for those kind of workers. In fact, part of this plan that we did, a study, we said, how do we look in terms of the growth of IT workers compared to mature digital infrastructure cities? And you can see that average growth rate is 7.6% over 10 years of IT workers. And you get to the direct competitors that we got from the alliance list and from the Richmond, Greater Richmond Partnership, you can see that we're growing just a little bit behind that in terms of our competitors. But then look at our corridor, look at Richmond and Virginia Beach, and we're only growing at 4.6%, 4.1% in terms of attracting IT workers. And that's, we have to change this equation. This is the workforce of tomorrow in terms of fueling and supporting our digital infrastructure. So we need to build it and attract these kind of workers. So how are we doing that? RVA plus 757 equals a global internet hub when we put our assets together. So we started a committee a year ago. We got Go Virginia funding. We formed the steering committee. We had matching dollars come in from Dominion, the city of Virginia Beach, Henrico County, Hampton Roads Alliance, ODU, an IT cyber firm, Dragonfly, plus the Go Virginia grant. So we used this money and put a steering committee together across 10 different sectors. And in your materials, you can read the list of steering committee members, 62 different people, really impressive. And we had about eight or nine meetings. Once a month, we hired consultants with the budget that we have from Go Virginia and the matching funders. These are our consultants. Telegeography is the premier international consultant on assessing the capacity of digital internet hubs, of global internet hubs, and saying, who is one and who isn't. Interglobics is really a maker of markets in terms of Vinay Nagpal. And Dr. Terry Clover is from George Mason and does a lot of studies on data centers and the value of digital networks. So it's a lot of type on this slide, but we basically went through a really methodical year-long process to do a strategic plan. And what we really learned is that around the world, when there's intentionality, when different players get together and try to make the market go faster and create basically an industry of digital infrastructure players, greater things happen, and they happen faster. And so when we learned about this and we thought about how far we've come and how much more there is to do, we said, let's get hyperorganized. And so we came up with 10 core strategies that are outlined in the plan. And I'm just going to take you through 30 seconds on each one. The first is, everybody on the steering committee said, this is a lot of fun, and actually, we can't believe how much we've learned in putting this plan together. Let's stay together and form an association. So we're going to stand up the Global Internet Hub Council. And think of it as an association of people from Hampton Roads in Richmond who are in the digital infrastructure space, people that are responsible for subsea cables, for terrestrial networks, for data centers, but all meeting every month as an emerging industry working together. And so that's job one, because this committee, this council, is actually going to be responsible for implementing the nine other strategies that I'll take you through. The second one is to get our cities and counties in between Richmond and Hampton Roads really educated to the level that you guys are about digital infrastructure. Dominion Energy gets called all the time to stand in front of boards of supervisors and have to start at the very beginning to kind of explain what this is all about. We need to get everybody up to speed, so everybody can say yes and make things happen when this opportunity presents itself. So an education campaign. Second, third point is to make sure that we increase the awareness of this corridor as a global internet hub on infrastructure investors. I had the opportunity to talk to this company, it's International Invest in Data Centers, and they were just really, you know, kind of back to square one in terms of what we were about. They weren't looking at Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads in the Richmond region together as something unique. And so when we explained it to them, they said, please send us your plan. We need to start to think about this market in a different way. This market is so much more robust when you guys are combining your assets. Number four, support the growth of local internet networks. We need to inventory all the networks and make that public and really try to make this market and investors, make it happen faster. Number five is pitch subsea cable investors on Virginia landings. One of our consultants, Telegeography, said, in the next 10 years, there are going to be 10 to 12 new subsea cables on the East Coast. We should be in a position to get two or three more here in Virginia Beach. But we've got to package ourselves and take the story that we want more, that we really are open for business, if you will. And then we've got a little bit of inventory left on our current infrastructure, subsea landings, but let's think about this and show that we really are thoughtful. One of the problems, I kid you not, with subsea cables is that anchors from boats sometimes crash into those cables. And it sounds like the randomness of that is crazy, but it actually happens around the world. And so the Coast Guard, right now, is working with the Maritime Association to figure out a grid system that could be no anchor zones. And they want our help in figuring out, you know, how do we make sure that everybody's at the table? So when we create a grid system that everybody signs off on it, that everybody's pleased with it, from Dominion Energy with the offshore wind, to the current subsea cable operators, to maritime industry and the shipping channels. And so that takes a lot of coordination, but that's number five. What we need to do is really make sure there are safe passages for those subsea cables. And then think about even the landing stations at Virginia Beach and where you guys have approved subsea landings. And, you know, is there an opportunity for any more? And to work with your economic development people to make sure that everybody's coordinating on that. Number six is prepare data center sites. The alliance has just finished a study identifying 10 data center sites across Hampton Roads. And we would like to work to try to certify some of those, push it as long, as far as possible to get ready for investors, to take the guesswork out of investing in any one of those sites and making it a data center site. And then number seven, encourage the growth of IXP's. And this, again, Richmond has a big one in D-Kicks. We got to get one in Hampton Roads. And there are other IXP's around the world. We want to package who we are and what we are together as Richmond and Hampton Roads and get greater attention here to think about other IXP's investing in both markets. And I'll tell you why that's important. You know, all of us like to, I think, watch Netflix and have an account with Microsoft that has our emails on it. When you have an IXP and you've integrated your networks, then it broadcasts to the world that you guys have a lot of connected eyeballs. And so those content providers will say, it's worth our while putting our content and storing it locally. So when you're watching a Netflix movie, you're not having that buffering sometime that happens, because you're not going to Loudoun or going to Atlanta. You're actually having to watch the original source of that movie parked right here in this market. So an IXP is important. When you do your last Google search, you want it to be instantaneous when you come back in three hours. That's your history, because it's all stored locally. Same thing with networks, Netflix, same thing with Microsoft and all your emails. That happens when you get an IXP. And so we want to have IXP's in both markets. And then number eight, support the fiber network ring concept. You guys, again, kudos for seeing the future and investing in building one. We want to have the same due diligence happen in Richmond. And so the Richmond IT professionals, just like yours, from cities across Hampton Roads, are going to, we're going to have meetings and start to think about, is Richmond the right market for an internet network ring as well? And so I'm really looking forward to hosting some of those meetings. Those decisions need to be made locally. And so we'll see where that ends up. And then the last one is, or the last two is promote Dominion's ability to provide power. Dominion Energy, as I said, 21% of its output goes to data centers. And the growth of data centers is going to continue, the demands are going to continue. And so we've got to always set the record straight of where Dominion is and have them to be part of this plan. They were an investor early on in the plan, and they're part of, going to be part of this Global Internet Hub Council. But we really need to make sure that the right information's getting out on what Dominion can deliver. And the last one is advance tech talent pipeline. We're seeing other communities really get together their educational resources and really coordinate the kind of workforce they need to support digital infrastructure. And so we want to do the same thing here in Richmond, to make sure that we're husbanding all of the current programs and talking to the digital infrastructure firms and operators, and to make sure that there isn't a gap between the supply of the talent and the demand for the talent that they need. So in a nutshell, we are trying to make our market happen faster, right? You guys really got started on this, the Richmond folks with QTS and with Meta, and it's just phenomenal when you take a tour of those mammoth data centers. But it takes all the other things that make up what we're calling a global internet hub. And we want to pull the industry together and work with everybody to make this happen faster and faster. So it gives us an economic development advantage and future proves us for generations to come. So thank you for having me. This is very exciting, and thank you for being such a leader in this effort.
So John, kudos for being so efficient in your presentation. Great job. And I think this is really good, because this council has been very, I think, where we're exactly for the subsea cables. If it wasn't for us, they would be here. Anyway, with the network authority and hard work, and our ring is under construction and it's doing really, really well. I'm going to have a mom who aren't done, but it's going very, very well. And so we really are, and we've been looking at, hoping that the peninsula is going to get started, and so we'll be connected to the peninsula. There is a lot of grant money out there, member money, that came through, especially the pandemic, because I think they realized that broadband was extraordinarily important. It's a utility, just like you turn the water on or electricity, you've got to have the internet. So that's with that. Maybe we got a job. Ask John. For?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Moran, for that great presentation.
And for your work on this, three comments, two questions, and then a comment. So this is the first I've known of other East Coast landings for subsea cables. You mentioned Myrtle Beach and another site in North Carolina. I thought we were the only ones, so we have to compete. We have to keep that in mind.
I will comment on that. There are 500 cables around the world.
And they've been put in place over time. Cables last about 20 years. The two landing sites on the East Coast, New York and Miami area, and Hurricane Sandy taught the worldwide digital infrastructure players, look out, look out, because when Sandy hit, some of Western Europe went dark and some data centers couldn't handle it. And so what happened then is they said, let's diversify, and they found their way to you, into Virginia Beach and all of y'all's great work. And so that created that sort of beachhead, no pun intended. And then that, that put us on the map. But now, other places like Myrtle Beach are saying, no, we want to be part of this action. And so they're doing what you're doing in Sandbridge with Global Links.
One follow-up and then a comment. So when you speak about tech workers, I thought that with NASA Langley, with new shipbuilding, Huntington Ingles, with...
The shipbuilding industry, defense industry here, we had a lot of engineers, we're ranked third in the country for engineers. That's not the same as a tech worker.
That's right. That's, and we just looked up using jobs EQ, IT and tech workers.
Then lastly, could you work, comment on RVA 757, where that is in 30 seconds?
Yep.
How long have you been at it? Thank you for your leadership on that. And what can we as a city do to continue that growth?
Thank you for that opportunity. Just in, just in 30 seconds, we are in a, on a path, we have become over the last three years, a nonprofit. And we have this amazing board of CEOs in both markets, and we have those priorities that you saw. And those are big priorities to try to get that trail built from Williamsburg down here. And, you know, it's called the Boat Trail here, we call it the Capital Trail, but then how to get more passenger rail service. So as, if we can have your leadership and work together, when we have these opportunities like the I-64 gap, and we said, everybody, we need to write letters for you guys with how much you're respected to really come aboard at those moments is what we really need. That's, it's really the clout of all these business leaders and people like you coordinated at the right opportunity to make big things happen. And that's what we're about.
I wrote down a few things again. Thank you so much for putting us in that leadership, because that's what we want to always be.
Yes.
Couple of things I wrote down. I'm happy about the talent pipeline and that you went for K, because we have little people ready to learn.
That's right.
So everything was forward. You mentioned about Dominion's ability to promote.
Yeah.
Is it possible for us to get Dominion in here to say what all they can promote and so forth, instead of us being on a curriculum? Next thing about the safety that you mentioned for setting up these bridges, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, it's fascinating that there have been accidents around the world and other... Yeah, it's fascinating that there have been accidents around the world in other global internet hubs that are port cities where ship anchors have just, you know, just arbitrarily, they said, we got to stop here before we go into port. We drop anchor and then bang, we splice one of those multimillion dollar cables. And you just would think, how could that happen? When you sit on a beach and look out, is this too much water? It happens. And so what we're thinking is if we could show the world that we are so buttoned up that we even have figured out no anchor zones, that the marine industry loves, that Dominion loves, that everybody has signed off on. And so when the Coast Guard and the Virginia Maritime Industry Association are saying, we need to work as many people as possible to come to the table to agree to something like that, and including, you know, local, regional, state government, and the shipping industry, and the offshore wind industry, all of this. And that's a monumental task to get everybody to agree on something like that. But boy, what a message that would send to the world that, you know, we're that thoughtful, that we really are thinking about that. So I, I think it's going to take probably, you know, probably a couple of years, but this is a long-term game. These subsea cables aren't going away. And we need to show the world that we value them so much.
Yeah, I'm glad you're bringing the military.
Yes.
Because they have that expertise and military is important.
That's right.
And then finally, you had 60-plus leaders, but I couldn't read it.
Yes.
Is there, where you could send us a lodge version for councils?
Yes, ma'am. But I will tell you, it represented four branches of the military, represented economic development, the state level, the regional level, and then at the local level, it represented businesses like CarMax and Bank America. It represented a higher education with community colleges and four-year institutions. We tried to make sure it was representative, that everybody has a stake in this because it's not enough to be a global internet hub to attract business. We've got to be a global internet hub so everybody has access. We've got to make sure this is a plan that really differentiates our community in a number of ways. And that's, that's really what this is about.
Thank you.
So you covered, your representation, you covered all demographics. You got minority bases covered and everything's covered in there. Yeah, if you could, I agree with Dr. Hammond. If you could send us a list of those names, I'd like to check out.
Absolutely. And I'll send you a list of our board members on RVA 757 Connects. And I also want to mention, the way we work is we've got the 75 leaders, and I'm sure you recognize many of their names. We also have something called the Mega Region Institutional Council. And that's a group that comes to every single meeting we have, all of our board meetings. They represent parallel organizations like the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, and then the, in the Richmond, it's equivalent, which is a community foundation for Greater Richmond. The Executive Roundtable in Hampton Roads and the Management Roundtable in Richmond, the Chamber in Hampton Roads, and then Chamber RVA in Richmond, plus the Williamsburg Chamber. So every major organization, the Planning District Commission in Hampton Roads, and then in the Richmond Plan RVA. So those folks really give us a sense of what's going on and what needs are happening and where they could use our support. And then here's the board that provides the support at the opportune moments. And that's what we're about. So one of the early lessons we learned was Richmond had a fledgling port called the Richmond Marine Terminal. And the CEOs, before we became a nonprofit, said, gosh, I wonder if this is the right way that the city of Richmond's running its own port. Seems like those guys in Hampton Roads know a little bit about ports. So we started talking 10 years ago, the Virginia Port Authority, and lo and behold, John Reinhardt at the time running, said, we, we would love to come and help you run your Richmond Marine Terminal. And so that's what happened. A long-term lease got put in play, and now the Richmond Marine Terminal's part of Virginia's port system. And that is, that gave us the courage and the confidence to keep going and now work on these other initiatives. And to say, we've got to help both regions. So anything that helps both of our regions, that's what we want to deliver on.
Worth it to say.
So John, if I could maybe expand, because I've been a part of some of those meetings. If we're not together, we're not 12th, then how much of the growth, future growth of the United States takes place in those other mega regions?
Yeah.
Is it 80%?
80% of the growth takes place in mega regions of our growth in population and our growth in GDP. And I know you guys are doing extremely well, economic development wise, but when you look at the totality of both regions, we really are behind. And we got to go faster. And I'm not here to say that RVA 757 Connects is the only way to do this. It's just one more way. It's one more thing that we have going. And we got to all work a little bit smarter, a little bit harder, to really make sure our region is on the map.
So the map that you showed, the subsea cables coming ashore at Camp Pendleton and Sandbridge, and it says that currently we have three active subsea cables with fully permitted capacity for four more, all expected to go within that area between Camp Pendleton and Sandbridge.
Right. That's what, that's what's approved now.
With those same places as the landing sites, or are we anticipating additional landing sites?
That is up for debate and consideration. You know, as we watch the eastern, the eastern seaboard with our worldwide experts saying, we're going to get 10, 10 to 12 more cable landings somewhere in the eastern seaboard. You know, can we get one more set here in Virginia Beach? And that's what we want to work with the economic development guys and the global investors and to see, you know, are there some sites that really make sense? It makes sense for all stakeholders. And so that's just a whole, it's just a whole number of things we have to start to consider. I think what we don't want to do in Virginia is say, no, we're done, close the door. You know, we got to say, wait a minute, this is, looks like it's the future of the, of our economic backbone. How do we keep moving forward? And do so in a way that educates everybody and has everybody understanding the benefits of it and supporting what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Sabrina. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
With all of, of course, the benefits that we see here, and one of the things you mentioned is having all of this information in one particular hub. And we live in a world where people hack systems. And so my first thought is, how are we looking to make sure we prevent those types of hacks? And on the security side?
Yes.
Looking forward to ensure and being proactive in that, in that manner.
That is a great question. One of the advantages that Hampton Roads in Richmond has in economic development is the category of cybersecurity. And if you look at the preponderance of folks in that category, to the population of workers, you quickly realize that we have a huge advantage over other cities. We're one of the best locations for cybersecurity professionals in Richmond and Hampton Roads. We need to leverage that. And I know one of the targets of the Alliance in trying to go after companies and industries is to go after cybersecurity, national security firms. And so leveraging them and having them part of this effort to really help point to, how do we use things like this new network ring that has a whole bunch of bandwidth, but had to have some bands reserved for that security issue? Some bands reserved for hospitals that need to communicate if something bad happens, or even the cybersecurity firms. So the network ring is just the beginning. How do we create even more private networks that can really give us this advantage and complement our advantage in cybersecurity already? And then what happens when you get known for that is then other cybersecurity firms want to locate here. This becomes the hotspot in the country. And I don't believe cybersecurity is going to diminish at all. It's going to get more and more important. So great question. And that's exactly kind of the, the vision that we have, is that we get the industry to have a formal ground that they can meet and talk about and take on topics like that and said, well, how do we speed that up? How do we get that going even faster? So that's exactly what we plan to do.
Okay. Anybody else?
Excellent job. And so it's wonderful to know that we are part of, and we've been the leader, actually, in all of this. You know, it's really all kind of started here, so. And Sabrina, you asked a really excellent question about the cybersecurity. And we have partnered with GTS to do the marketing and to, not to do the build out, but also, but to bring in the different players who's going to be on the ring. And they have, one of their expertise is cybersecurity, so that was one of the great things about partnering with them. I have to take a moment here to let the public know that there is a sound issue with, with our meeting. They're working on it, they're trying to make it better. So everybody know that they're, we are aware that there's a sound problem. So just, anyway. Thank you so much, John. We really appreciate you coming down and presenting to our council.
You bet. And please have me back for updates.
Okay.
And I really appreciate your question about how to support us. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, next up is a very young Chris Boynton.
Shy, wait a moment. A couple of council members stepped out.
No offense.
Okay, I'll proceed. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today on a very important topic, your election system going forward. You'll recall that there's been a number of actions that have happened in the last few years that have impacted our election system. But as, by way of a refresher, as much for the public as it is for you, our pre-2020 election system is governed by the City Charter, Section 301. It provides that there would be 11 members of council, four of whom, including the mayor, are elected at large, meaning they can reside anywhere in the city and they are voted on by anyone in the city. The seven members under the city charter system were to be elected from residence districts, but by the entire city's population at large. And then, of course, our residence districts needed to be of equal population approximately. That had been in similar form since 1996 and had not materially changed since 1967, when it was created essentially by virtue of a political compromise when the town of Virginia Beach merged with Princess Anne County. There were referenda in 1990, two different referenda with different wording, reached differing outcomes as to whether the population of Virginia Beach wanted a ward system. Additional points to consider in terms of our historical system was that our district boundaries have been and are required to be adjusted after each decennial census every 10 years. And then our school board is elected using the same method as the city council, save and except for its chair, who is not elected by the general public, but by members of the body. You'll recall that there was a lawsuit filed in 2017 against the city by Latasha Holloway. That case was evolved such that it changed the legal theory. It added a second plaintiff, Georgia Allen, and Campaign Legal Center, a DC organization came in as the lawyers. That matured to trial in October of 2020. You'll recall that the trial court delayed issuing its liability ruling until March of 2021, and then issued a separate remedial order in December of 2021. And so that is the means by which we ended up with the system that was used in 2022, which is a 10-1 ward system with three, what are called minority opportunity districts, which are all majority-minority voters in that district and are believed to perform in a way that elect minority candidates of choice. That, that ruling, or those rulings by the district court, however, were vacated by the Fourth Circuit in late July of 2022, after the 10-1 system had been implemented for use in the 2022 election. And it was not something that was subject to change, given the timelines and Supreme Court of United States's Purcell doctrine that disfavors election system changes so close to an election. You'll recall that as of July 27th, when the Fourth Circuit issued its opinion, our candidates had already qualified for the ballot. And so we were well down the tracks, so to speak, on that election. Importantly, in that window between when the case was tried in October 2020 and when the trial court's initial injunction ruling came out in March of 2021, we had a General Assembly session. And during that General Assembly session, two important things happened as it relates to the city's historical system and its charter. The first is House Bill 2198, which effectively changed the seven residence districts into single-member ward districts going forward without any change that the council had to make or any further changes the General Assembly had to make. And then secondly, and more broadly, that General Assembly adopted the Virginia Voting Rights Act, which changed the landscape of the law in several ways. In particular, relevant to this conversation, it changed the, the view of at-large districts statewide where there is believed to be, or provably can be racial polarization in voting populations. All that being said, brief recap of the Holloway case. Long story short, the case was tried and then the ruling was issued in March 2021, finding that the system, the historical charter system violated the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, because it diluted the votes of a minority group of Hispanic, Black, and Asian combined voters. And then there was a remedial period at the end of which, in December of 2021, the court imposed a 10-1 system and maps that were based upon maps drawn by a special master who was appointed by the court. And that also accomplished essentially the 2020 decennial redistricting. This is that House bill I was telling you about that changed the law such that, notwithstanding any other provision of law, general or special, which means notwithstanding what your charter says, in a locality that imposes district-based, award-based residency requirements for members, the member elected from each district or ward shall be elected by the qualified voters of that district or ward and not by the locality at large. So without anything happening further, whether it be in the Fourth Circuit or the trial court, and without any other changes from the General Assembly or this body, your residence district system changed to a ward district system as to those seven districts. The Virginia Voting Rights Act, as I mentioned a moment ago, basically disfavors at-large methods of elections, saying that an at-large method of election shall not be imposed or applied by the governing body of any locality in a manner that impairs the ability of members of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. Now, that is important because that is a much easier standard for a person who wants to go to court and challenge a system than the federal system that relies on what's called the Jingles, Thornburg Jingles three-part test. All those defenses that might exist in federal court would not exist in state court action that is allowed under the Virginia Voting Rights Act. That could be brought by a private citizen. It doesn't have to be brought by, say, the Virginia Attorney General or anyone else. Importantly also, the Virginia Voting Rights Act also created a preclearance process whereby either the Virginia Attorney General has to preclear the system that's adopted or any changes to it, or there has to be a very robust notice and public comment process, which at the end, kind of, by the way it's worded, invites a lawsuit against locality. So importantly, even without the Holloway case, as if it had never happened, you no longer have your charter system. One, because the seven residence districts are now ward districts. And two, while in theory you still have three at-large districts plus the mayor, those at-large districts are subject to a private citizen challenge under a very favorable standard for a plaintiff, which also includes allowing for recovery of attorney's fees. And that, that challenge may exist and go forward, even if the Virginia Attorney General has already precleared your system. So they're just two different things. Now, with respect to Holloway, the, I'll focus at this point on the reversal on appeal, the vacating of the ruling. The court pointedly did not reverse based upon the quote-unquote merits of the case, but rather it reversed on the issue of mutinous. What, what the Fourth Circuit essentially found was that the, the change by the General Assembly in 2021, which changed the residence districts to ward districts, meant the challenged system in the litigation case was no longer in effect by virtue of a change in. in the litigation case was no longer in effect by virtue of a change in state law. So there was no reason for the court to rule back in March of 2021, when the general assembly had already changed the system. But that is a different outcome than if the Fourth Circuit had said, for example, the judge was wrong on the merits. And that's important to understand in this context. So, we held our election in November 2022, using the system that had been imposed by the court, which had 10 residents, I'm sorry, 10 ward, single-member districts, all of which are approximately the same population size within reasonable tolerances, and which created three minority opportunity districts, which are districts 4, 7, and 10. But where we find ourselves today is because the Fourth Circuit vacated the orders of the district court, the city is not presently under a federal court order imposing a system. And you also have your charter, but your charter, one, has been changed by operation of state law, two, you've not done a 2020 redistricting under it, and three, you still have, importantly, the Holloway case still hanging out there, because the Fourth Circuit, instead of just reversing or vacating and dismissing, remanded it to the trial judge to receive amended complaints, amended challenges or claims by the plaintiffs, if they feel the city is moving down a path that is inconsistent with section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. And so, as we went through this process of public input for the last six months, and we talked about possible systems other than 10-1, those conversations were always couched in the context that if we want to try anything other than a 10-1 system, we're going to have to reach out to the court, reach out to the plaintiffs, and work through that process with them. What materially changed on that front was that there was a conference call that the court initiated on May 25th of this year, and I'll get into the details, but it, I think, made clear that our practical options were not what our theoretical options might be. So, what do we need for a system going forward? Give me a second to refresh here. First of all, obviously, we must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Now, that is, you know, to some degree, a pregnant question, because, you know, certainly the city's position in court disagrees strongly with what the court found and what the plaintiffs asserted as to what systems comply and don't comply with the Voting Rights Act. But as a general proposition, the city's system must afford equal opportunity, it must not dilute minority voting strength, and from the federal court that we know, and in fact, the Holloway case, we know that the 10-1 system that you used for 2022 does comply with the Voting Rights Act, even in the eyes of the court, because that was the system the court ordered. As we pointed out, while anybody could challenge a system that you implement going forward, because the plaintiffs are still in the Holloway case, they could just simply renew by amending their claims, and at least in theory, assert the accrued attorney's fees that they asserted from the work that was done in the case prior to this point. There would be defenses to that, but that is a possible assertion. Secondly, obviously, you must comply with the new Virginia Voting Rights Act. That does require either preclearance by the Attorney General, or this robust notice and comment process that I mentioned. Secondly, your at-large districts are, I'll call them, subject to a challenge by virtue of the idea that if there is an impact negatively to a minority group's ability to influence the outcome of an election, then you can't have at-large districts. So, going forward, under any system, you either need to adopt a decennial redistricting measure for any district system, and, I say and/or, but I think the preferred path is "and," go to the general assembly for approval of what other system you adopt. Now, there are a couple of ways to get to general assembly approval. One is a straight charter change to whatever system you adopt, and that would be a 2/3 supermajority required in each chamber of the general assembly, plus the governor's signature. But there's possibly the ability to write a law of general applicability that would only need a simple majority in the general assembly. So, we are just giving you that by background, we are not, at this point, advocating a path as to the general assembly. We think that should be explored further, if you get further down the road. But as we sit here today, the barriers to any system other than 10-1 with the three minority opportunity districts that you used for your 2022 election are strong, if not insurmountable. First of all, your federal court challenge remains out there, and importantly, there was a recent Supreme Court decision regarding the Alabama federal house districts that made clear that the law of voting rights under section 2 has not materially changed for purposes of our decision. Second of all, you know that this court and this group of plaintiffs, by virtue of this conference call that was held on the 25th of May, made clear that even if you were to pursue a referendum, the plaintiffs believed that that would be an act in furtherance of possibly a different system, and they would intend to renew hostilities in court. And perhaps more importantly than that, the court itself made its view clear that only a 10-1 system with these minority opportunity districts will comply with the Voting Rights Act under his view, and basically that any other system would be enjoined if you pursued that, and there would not be an election in 2024 if the city council elected a different path. All that being said, you do have to take some type of affirmative action toward a system, whether it be a 10-1 system or otherwise. Specifically, and I think this is important for you to know the context, and for the public to know the context, the court expressed extreme frustration with the city's pace of considering the election system issue to this point. It made clear that it believed only the 10-1 system with these three minority opportunity districts is sufficient to overcome the Voting Rights Act issues that that court sees, and it made clear the city wouldn't have an election in 2024 if it pursued another path. The court is clearly watching everything we do, we talk about, you do, you talk about. And the plaintiffs, having heard all that from the court, they themselves made clear that they don't believe any system other than 10-1 is acceptable. Particularly, the idea of a 7-3-1 ward, super ward system, was one possible option we discussed with you earlier in this process. Importantly, the plaintiffs had said they don't view that as a viable option, because it was considered and rejected by the special master in 2021. They also reject a referendum, making the point that if you have a racially polarized electorate, a referendum has the potential just to yield, basically, the majority's opinion, which is not itself necessarily consistent with the Voting Rights Act. And they made clear they intend to file their amended claims if the city either pursues a referendum or any other system. So, where are we and what is the path forward? I would tell you, as a matter of legal practicality, you are not seeing a path other than adopting a 10-1 system with three minority opportunity districts. Importantly, even if you were to do a referendum, we know that that would lead us back into federal court with potentially renewed attorney's fees, claims being made. Importantly, you did have your public input process, which concluded, I guess, in early June. You received feedback, I believe, on June 22nd, I'm forgetting dates, around that time, and it told you that there was public support for a 10-1 system. And so if you were to adopt a 10-1 system, you would be consistent, at least with what your validated survey results told you. So if you were to want to move forward with a 10-1 system, we would encourage you to pursue the following steps: to adopt a decennial redistricting ordinance, making clear that you're adopting the 10-1 system and the maps and districts that the court imposed for 2022. That needs to be done under state law, either more than 60 days before the November 7th election coming up, or after the election. So you have a window in the next, let's say, 30 days to go ahead and adopt something that would move forward with this decennial redistricting measure, or you would be outside of the election, and potentially in the December, at the earliest, you could take action. I would suggest to you that that is inconsistent with what the court's expected timeline is of us, and you are encouraged to make a decision in this August, you know, maybe very early September time window, to not run afoul of the court's view of the decision timeline. We would then pursue Attorney General preclearance. Importantly, the last Attorney General precleared the 10-1 system that you used in 2022, so I don't anticipate there would be any preclearance issues with the 10-1 system, we've got to go through that process. And then, you would seek in the 2024 general assembly session, a conforming charter change or general change to state law, which would harmonize state law with your redistricting ordinance. Now, the code provides very explicitly that a decennial redistricting measure actually takes precedence over a charter, but at the same time, we, I think, believe the better path is to go to the general assembly and request that state law be changed to harmonize with the redistricting ordinance that you presumably will adopt. If there's a majority of council that wishes to proceed with adopting the 10-1 system with three minority opportunity districts, we would encourage you to have your public hearing on the redistricting ordinance on August 8th, and have a vote on that on August 15th. That would comply with the state law issues I mentioned a moment ago. Also then, you could deal with any charter change request or general state law request as part of your legislative agenda timeline, on which you would vote in November 14. So you would have more time for that piece of it after you decided what to do via the decennial redistricting ordinance. So I'm not sure if I have more slides or not, but I don't have a clicker that's working. So, there we go.
Thank you, counsel, for that presentation. The question I have is, throughout your PowerPoint, you reference districts or wards. Legally, what is it? Is it district, or is it ward, or is it our choice?
Well, districts are a subset of a locality, something less than the entire locality. You can have, and this is why I'm saying ward sometimes, you can have residence districts, which is what the charter provides, where the candidate has to live within that district, but the entire city votes for that person. When I use the term ward district, what I mean is it's a single-member district where the candidate must live in that district, and only the voters of that district get to decide, or get to vote on who their person is.
It's probably either way.
Yeah, I think...
I know our sister cities say ward, I think Norfolk has a ward.
Ward is a commonly understood term to mean a single-member district. I've said ward district perhaps redundantly, because I wanted to contrast with this idea of a residence district, which is a somewhat unusual provision in Virginia Beach.
Well, while we're in the district system, and I don't know, you know, what the appetite's going to be, but we're certainly in a district system now, and I wanted a district system in November. So I would like to challenge any other district to a competition, anything they want to do to prove District 1's the best. We can have a foot race, arm wrestling contest, spelling bee, or barbecue. You guys let me know what you want to do, but District 1 stands ready. Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I am really at a point of trying to sort through all of this, because I have some very strong feelings, which I have expressed much prior to this, about this concept of not allowing the people to vote on this issue. I think if it's all right, I'll just go ahead and give you my comments that I put together, and because I think it's important that we know the background. I think the very essence of voting rights is the right of our citizens to vote in elections. They have the right to elect their representatives, and the right to vote on issues of importance to the community. Circumvent the right of the people to have elections, in my opinion, is the very height of a violation of voting rights. And so that's why I'm having such a hard time dealing with all of these voting rights acts. Well, we just do away with elections, and then we've taken care of it. I think we have to look at the way Virginia Beach has operated, and I really feel that some of the findings that are out there are not exactly looking at the way we have worked in the past. From the very beginning of the current city of Virginia Beach, the city government has depended on hearing the will of the people in referendum. It was by a vote of the people that the small city of Virginia Beach merged with the county of Princess Anne, formed the current city of Virginia Beach. It was because of the demand of the people that all parts of the new city would be assured of representation on the city council, that the system of representation was developed. In a case which was ultimately heard by the United States Supreme Court in 1967, the system that would govern the city in its early years was upheld. Justice Douglas wrote in that opinion, quote, "The 7-4 plan seems to reflect a détente between urban and rural communities that may be important in resolving the complex problems of the modern megalopolis in relation to the city, the suburbia, and the rural countryside," end quote. In finding no invidious discrimination, the court concluded that the system was to be upheld. As time went on and the city exploded in growth, it became apparent that the seven boroughs were greatly diverse in population, and there could be a problem with representation. So in the 1990s, there was great attention to whether there needed to be a change in the system. In 1995, a referendum was held regarding the question of whether the seven boroughs needed to be adjusted to reflect equal population. However, the question also included a factor of introducing the ward system. That question was approved, but then there was an outcry from the citizens about the question. I have a whole stack of newspaper articles from that time, which reflect the public sentiment. When the issue went to the general assembly to be changed in our charter, the general assembly accepted the equalization of the boroughs, but mandated a second referendum on the ward issue. And I'm going to read from our charter, section 3.01(c), which says, "The city council shall, no later than January 1st, 1996, petition the circuit court to order an advisory referendum to be held on the question of whether the council member elected from each district shall be elected by the qualified voters of that district rather than at large. The wording of the question shall be determined by majority vote of the city council and shall be included in the petition. Upon the filing of the petition, the circuit court shall order that an advisory referendum be held on the question in the city at the municipal elections to be held in May of 1996," end quote. That election was held on May 7th, 1996, and the voters voted by a 2-1 margin to approve the question that the city council member elected to represent a particular borough be elected by all qualified voters throughout the city and at-large system, rather than only by the qualified voters residing in that particular ward system. Again, you can read these newspaper articles to follow the vigorous debate that went on in the time before the referendum election was held. Well, another almost 30 years have passed, and there is a discussion about revisiting the question. We clearly were considering a referendum on the issue when we were struck with the pandemic. The year 2020 just did not seem to be the time for the election system referendum, or our flood bond referendum, and we passed by the 2020 election and looked forward 2021. Without any public discussion, we then saw the general assembly introduce legislation to change... to change the system without a voter referendum, which is quite different from the General Assembly action of 95 and 96. Even though the General Assembly and the governor were asked to amend the legislation to require a referendum, as was done in 1996, that was not honored, and we find ourselves where we are today. I have much more documentation, but I won't bore you with that. It's available. But I say all of this to emphasize the point that this is not a sudden, delaying tactic, but it's the way our city has operated since the beginning, always following the mandated and approved processes. Even in the recent citizen survey, 63% of those who responded supported having a referendum. I find it very hard to believe that suddenly we're going to diverge from our established process of giving our citizens the right and opportunity to vote on this important issue. That, to me, is a severe violation of their voting rights, and I'm just having a great deal of difficulty trying to sort out all of this sudden legal stuff when we have followed everything that the courts have said from the beginning of our city.
Jen?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So I think these are separate issues. Listening to the, I think, the origin story of the city and the origin story of voting rights, the urban versus rural divide, it's a different divide today, and I don't know how that history speaks to the current issue of two plaintiffs that allege that the city has a history of racial discrimination in its voting practices. And the evidence of that is the lack of racial diversity among elected officials. The concern for these plaintiffs, as outlined in the presentation, is that if we were to go to a referendum, the same population that has created this uneven outcome in racial representation on city council would be the same population to give input via referendum, and that that would be another form of discrimination. So, I mean, it's uncomfortable, but the history of Virginia Beach is not a history that has welcomed and welcoming to racial, to black people. And I understand a rural-urban divide, but it's a different issue today. And so I think that depending on who you ask, the city has been slow-moving and making room for people who have different economic backgrounds, different racial backgrounds, and with this district system, we now have the most racially diverse, generationally diverse council in the city's history. And so if you do something different, you get different outcomes. But if we keep doing what we have been doing, we will keep getting what we've been getting. And that's been a council that a number of citizens have said are not reflective of the makeup of the city. I'm highlighting the racial diversity. We could also, I think, extend it to other forms of diversity as well beyond rural and urban. I think if we go back to 1967, the Voting Rights Acts, or the Voting Rights Act of the United States, that just passed in 1965, and black people in this country, let alone in the South and in Virginia, it's been a long road to voting rights and to representation in any position of power, whether it's in government or anywhere else. And so I think that it's a different issue that we're dealing with now, and that what we see with this lawsuit is essentially two women who are reflective of a community who has felt unheard in all of this time with all of these referendums, perspectives that have been ignored, I think, for too long. And so what I observed in the public input process and also something that we saw with the survey is I found it interesting how many different kinds of people supported 10-1. So not only racially, but even politically, there were folks across political identities who liked the idea of having access to a person who could speak for them or to represent them, who can show up in their communities. And what we know by pattern, there's evidence to this in this city, is that it's been a very narrow category of person who has been able to raise the funds and to get the support to run a citywide race. So there's been a lot of people who have been disqualified in previous systems, and there have been, I think that there's been longstanding effort to remedy that. So I'd like to challenge the idea that this is somehow nefarious or off course. I think this is, a lawsuit has been brought forward to make visible a lot of the efforts that people in our community have been trying for generations to remedy, and I'm grateful that now we're at a point that we see the fruits of that labor.
I think it's important to understand why we are here, understand the past, but this is a time to look forward. Court has ruled, judge has made it plain, we have to select a path forward. And so we've been provided with several briefs on how we move forward, and this is important for our city, for the residents, that we come together and do as directed, as the court has held, as the state legislature has held. And, you know, to the point that's already been made, you look at the 10-1 system and electoral, or the electoral results from 2022, you see the most diverse city council that you've seen in our history, and this city is 60 years old. We're celebrating 60 years, and the last election system yielded the most diverse city council. That's important, and we want to continue that progress. How do we continue that progress? Continue with what the people stayed in, and the people have had time to weigh in, and they have weighed in. The survey that we spent and invested so much in brought the results back that 81% favors the 10-1 system. I think everything is in place. The court system has stated it, the Virginia Assembly legislature has stated it, the people have stated it, and it's been affirmed. The data is statistically sound, no matter how many folks participated or not, or the criticism is, the data is statistically sound, and we should move forward. I certainly would like to confirm the path forward here that's been laid out, public hearing, redistricting the ordinance August 8th, and then having a public hearing on the charter change, or excuse me, voting on that ordinance August 15th. That is clearly, as stated by staff, the path that we should take, and I concur with that path, and I think we should move forward in the future. And we're celebrating 60 years of this city being in existence. Let's continue progress. Let's move forward.
Anybody else?
Just for a point of clarification on fairness, the school board down the road, they lost a minority in the last election system when they had the, under the 10-1. So we understand it's not an end-all, be-all, but there is truth in the matter. The fact is, they lost a minority member of the school board in the November 22 election, just for a point of clarification.
Madam Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Boynton, and Mr. Stiles. You know, we've discussed this in closed session because of pending litigation, and it was really important for us to have this conversation so that the members of the public and for us as a body, so that everybody understands these constraints and the legal framework that we're operating within. I commend you and thank you very much for representing us well, but also affording this opportunity to have us communicate and for you to communicate to the public some of these issues. I'm glad that we did the survey, and I know that that was a controversial decision in some respects, but I think the survey gave us exactly, in many ways, what we asked for, which was a definitive answer. And not only was it 81% of the people who were in favor of maintaining our 10-1 system, but it was also, what was it, 69 or 65% of those surveyed either moderately or strongly preferred that system. And what I found particularly compelling were a couple things. The 95% statistical significance within 4.3% margin of error means that if you ask the question to the general public 100 times, you're going to get the same answer 95 times. Equally compelling to me was that there was little, if any, deviation between gender, race, and socioeconomic status as it related to that question. A referendum, on the other hand, as my colleague, Councilwoman Rouse, mentioned, you put a question out to the public in a majority-majority population, the likelihood that you get a different answer than what the statistically significant answer was, I would say would be high. And on top of that, if we were to ask the public in the form of a referendum, a ballot question, anything, it would have to be a yes or no answer, a yes or no question. So this referenda are not multiple choice. It's either up or down. And if we were to ask a question and were delivered an answer by the public that further complicated that issue, I think that that would put us in a pretty difficult position in terms of what to do going forward. I also found the public input process, I attended several community hearings, watched the ones I wasn't able to attend online, and, you know, the one that I went to, the kickoff one in Bayside, you know, the folks that I spoke to were extremely appreciative that we gave them the opportunity to come out and to engage in this conversation. I met people at those, this town hall informational sessions that had never been to a public meeting before but felt compelled enough to go because it was such a fundamental question. And not only did we ask them their opinion, we helped educate them on what the system was about and what the alternatives were. And I heard from not just usual suspects who, you know, show up to multiple town halls, but I heard from civic leaders in my district, from all walks and from all political stripes. So whether or not you or we like the particular outcome, I think we asked the question, we got the answer, and I think it's time to move forward.
Amelia?
I agree with what you are saying, Josh, and Jennifer, and Sabrina, and also Rocky about this District 1, which he has been a strong advocate of it. I had, I was one that was on council before. I went through the trial, and some people became a little upset in a question that was asked, how were you treated on council? There were three different answers, most likely from different people, minorities. I had been the third minority on, and I had been treated well, and I mentioned that. And I got along with everyone on council because it's each person's personality of what happens, whether you get along with people or not. But the point is not this situation where we're looking at the 10-1. Well, it is good that we did have that referendum. I know, because if you look back, I voted one way, but for the referendum, I voted for it, because I felt, as a researcher myself, that gives you a more objective approach to everything.
Survey.
Survey. They gave us a more objective report. And also, if you notice, the Virginia Tech people, they came in and they looked at it upside down, whichever way, but kept coming out with the same result. And sometimes we can beat a dead horse over and over. We're at that stage now for the council. And I think most of us here now realize, you know, it's not worth the other session that you mentioned, all the going through the legal processes and so forth. And the 10-1 worked out about. Most people finally went in, voted, and had the results, and boy, you hear from people in the district all the time. Even my recent community day, I said, share with us, in all different groups, what is specific for that district. Even though we still vote on many things as a group, at least each of us each week can bring something forward of what happened, plus or minus, in our district, and I think we have more people listening. As you know, one of our members, his name is District 1. So that's excitement. All this is working, and I think the system that you all have shared with us, within the timeline we have, there's enough going on in Richmond right now. We can take our stand, move forward on what we have, program, survey, and our people have spoken.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chris, thank you for being.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of the city council. Today, I come before you, we're going to do a two-for-one, because I know you're very, have a full agenda, and we want to respect your time. So today, we're going to present the auditor, the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts, as well as the auditor of the Virginia Beach Convention Center. On Friday, we did send out a yellow packet with the full report, as well as we emailed it. If you did not get a hard copy and you'd like a hard copy, just let me know. We've actually brought a couple of hard copies, so I'm not sure what happened with the mix-up. On your desk, you do have the actual PowerPoint presentation, and the Sandler Center is the shorter one, so I will start with the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts presentation. Before I do that, I do want to welcome some guests that we do have. We have David Simone, the general manager with Oakview Group that runs the Sandler Center, also Mike Freiling, the district general manager with Oakview Group. We have Beth Hundley, deputy director, and Emily LeBeauz. It's her birthday today, so she is not present today, but we can wish Emily, if she's watching, give a shout-out to Emily. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. Sure this is on.
Okay. So the Sandler Center one is on. So we're just going to talk.
Should be.
We just got the one presentation.
Okay.
This is the presentation.
Okay, we can go with it. Yeah. What's that? All right, so while you're contacting. All right, so while you're contacting Rosanna to have her email, we'll go to the Convention Center. Sorry about that. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. So from the Convention Center side, we've got Nancy Hellman, the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we'll kind of pivot. All right, so the purpose of the audit was to determine the operating, is the Virginia Beach Convention Center operating effectively in accordance with the city and departmental policies? Okay? And audit focused on the Convention Center promotion and facility management area. Different types of events. They had over 1,300 events. And as you can see, there's various classifications. We've got conventions, traditional conventions, corporate meetings, our trade shows, consumer shows, food and beverages, meetings, seminars, sports and tournaments. And obviously, that's where we have our annual graduations, okay? High school graduations. And on this slide, just a breakdown of the various events. The Convention Center uses the Event Business Management System, EBS, and basically, it's an end-to-end platform to execute and record all the data related to their events. All right, so some of the revenues and expenditures. So on this shot, we show the revenues and the expenditures, as well as the variance. And in the green line, it's the budgeted variance. Okay, so as you can see, there have been, for the last, about the last five years, routinely expenditures have routinely exceeded revenues by about $2 million per year, which is the green line. Convention Center also began using a database to measure the economic impact modeled, offered by Destinations International, to generate estimated economic impact for certain events. All right, so that is the data that is collected. What did we find in regards to our results? So obviously, the Convention Center brings a lot of different events, and we know, aside from the revenue from the event itself, there is economic impact. So one of the findings that we had was basically to fully utilize the information, the data, so that we're not strictly looking at, there's a shortfall with expenses exceeding revenue, but are we making it up on the other side regarding economic impact? What are the direct, what are the indirect costs of all the various events that we are bringing in? So if we have a tool, we want to make sure we're using it to the fullest so we could truly measure the economic impact of the various events. Okay? So the recommendation related to economic impact was simply augment the information generated by the current model, including the impact of admission taxes, and depending on the audience and the explanatory language, create a best practices document to be used by all business units within CVB. And this was a similar recommendation and finding that we had at the Sports Center. Okay? One of the other issues, one of the other findings we had was goals to improve efficiency and effectiveness not implemented. So the Convention Center has internal goals. Obviously, during COVID-19, it was impacted in regards to implementing the goals. But the goals align with the following categories: operational excellence, customer satisfaction. And if you've been there, and we've all been there for various events, be it the mayor stated, the city, from an operational standpoint, they're second to none. They do a good job, customer satisfaction. But one of the main goals that they, we stress they need to focus on, is the sustainability and the financial integrity of the center. As I mentioned, you know, there's a $2 million variance. And if the necessary deep dive of both revenues and expenses bears out, that is, you know, they're doing their best and that's what it is, so be it. But I think they definitely want to look at, not only just the short term, but, as I mentioned, the long term. Okay? And I think this is also impacted by the fact that they have lost their Convention Center Manager and the Assistant Convention Center Manager for Business. And both of those are, if I'm correct, still vacant?
Business is filled.
Okay, business is filled, but the Convention Center Manager position is still vacant. So obviously, that impacts operations. Okay? So once key management positions have been filled, management should try to have that strategic meeting, set those goals, and do that deeper dive into our revenues, expenses, and how they operate. All right, finding three, the monthly commissions reconciliation. Now we're getting into some of the operating controls that we looked at. And this one is just related to the vendors. Part of the revenue that is generated comes from commissions from three primary sources, the food and beverage, audiovisual, and internet service we provide. So basically, we're just saying, to ensure that revenue is in fact, isn't complete and is for the proper amount and is in fact, collected, just make sure we strengthen our reconciliation process over that. And these are some of the basic internal control supervision, performance of reconciliation, and just following up, that we have in fact, received not only the proper amounts, but the proper amount in a timely fashion. And then we just had the related documents to that. Finding four, basically, this is a accounting finding, accounting issue in regards to how you're accounting for advanced deposits. Advanced deposits aren't a revenue until they are fully earned, so just properly classifying that as a liability account until the event takes place, and then we can move it over from a liability to an actual revenue. Finding five, basics, these are some compliance with policies and procedures. Again, these are more operating-type controls and their related reconciliations. Some of the issues, exceptions, we noted. Just making sure we had the proper invoices, they're properly signed off, and they're actually entered correctly into the event management system so that management can use the data within the system as a tool. Again, basically, that's what we said as far as our recommendations. Finding six, we looked at the bank account, we looked at the change fund. They had a change fund on hand that was $30,000 during the audit. They did reduce that to $20,000. And basically, that's used to handle cash, to make change for cash sales for those events where cash is an option to pay. We did point out, or we did make the note that the, that particular checking account at the time was not included under the city treasurer's portfolio. This account has since been added, but it will remain separate because basically, it acts as a, as a holding account before all the respective parties are paid out. And so we just had, so the recommendations related to strengthening the controls over that. And then finally, the final finding was accuracy and completeness of the event management system. We want to make sure this event management platform can be a management tool used to make good business decisions. So it is important that the information entered into the system is accurate, and it does also provide us, does also provide management of various potential or red flags for potential errors. Okay? For example, you would not have a food and beverage sales where you're not having any commission. Due to the nature of food and beverage sales, the city does get a commission. So there are some exceptions we founded relating to the data. More examples where if we want to ensure we're tracking the events and the clients, just example of different names being entered incorrectly, where it's going to show up as duplicate accounts. And the recommendations just related simply to strengthening, to ensure the integrity and reliability of the event data management system, that we have the related controls to decrease some of the risk of some of those errors. Okay? And then the last one, user access. Obviously, we want to make sure to any city system that user access is limited to those who require it, as well as the access they have. And we pointed out, and I believe a lot of this has been corrected, some of the access that was granted. Okay? And we had recommendations related specifically to address those issues. Okay? So overall, we determined that the Convention Center, except as noted, is, from an operation standpoint, operating effectively in accordance with city and departmental policies. Obviously, there's some opportunities for improvement. And before I take any questions, I do want to acknowledge Nancy and her staff that helped us during the audit, and would also like to acknowledge my staff, Keith Piper, who is on another assignment, is not here, and Gretchen Shidom, who helped out on this audit. So before we move to Sandler Center, any questions on the Convention Center?
Henry, thank you, Mr. Ramius, for this, for your audit. And I note here that your audit really addresses the operations of the Convention Center, and I think there are some good, wise recommendations there that we should take a look at. But I would also like to invite everyone, including the city manager, that we look at the Convention Center and how we can, I just don't accept, you know, a negative balance every year. What can we do to enhance the bottom line, whether it's additional hotel rooms nearby? Is it national consultant? Is it naming rights? Is it paid-for parking? What can we do to make things better at the Convention Center? Knowing where we are in the scheme of things, we're not Atlanta, or Chicago, or New York, but at the same time, we're in Virginia Beach. I think this brings to life that we ought to try to up our game in this realm.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment?
I just would like to say I've enjoyed working with Nancy, with the work they do and the way they coordinate, very much hands-on. What I would like to ask is how far along are they with getting this to second story?
Yes. And I do want to invite Nancy up, just to, I'd be remiss if I didn't have her make any comments, so.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's nice to see you all. Thank you very much for your question. We are very actively searching for the next General Manager of the facility. General Manager left at the end of February, so we've been going through this process for several months now. We've gone out in the typical fashion, and now we'll be working with a search firm to help us find the right candidate. It's that important of a position to us to ensure that we have the right person in the right seat. The business manager position has been filled, and that person came to us from another city department and has just hit the ground running. So we're really excited to see what she brings to the table. Thank you very much to Lyndon, especially to Keith, who is not here today, and to Gretchen. Thank you, guys, for being a part of our CVB family. They spent the better part of this year with us, which is pretty cool. I told Keith you'd have to come back and just hang out with us sometime, so.
Honorable.
Thank you, guys.
You have a.
Just one quick follow-up, if I can, Ms. Hellman. So now playing, if you will, at the Virginia Beach Convention Center is Beyond Van Gogh.
Yes.
Can you speak to that shortly?
Yes, I mean, Beyond Van Gogh is an amazing immersive art experience. I hope that if you haven't had a chance to come out and see it, please reach out to us. We'd love to show you behind the scenes and come inside and check it out. The Convention Center, just to sort of follow up on what you were talking about from a financial perspective, Convention Centers and public assembly buildings are typically a lost leader. They're meant to generate economic impact in the community. The Convention Center has met its revenue goals each year and also met its expenditure goals each year. So we do keep a really close eye on that, but we'll definitely be interested in working together to close the gap.
Chris?
I have a question. When you look at the decline in the events, and then you also look at new hotels that have come on market, I won't say any specific ones, but there seems, these hotels seem to be, seem to be bringing in more events. Do you, have we looked at that as a competing factor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so meeting space is definitely an important factor when you talk about bringing convention business into the city. And some convention pieces of business are one hotel pieces of business, just like you mentioned. If a hotel has the appropriate meeting space and hotel rooms, they can certainly host a meeting in their own ecosystem and make it successful. And then there are other conventions that are large, citywide pieces of business, and that's what we call them, that use more than one hotel, need transportation to and from the Convention Center, and require meeting space in multiple locations to make them happen. And we have lots of different examples of those, and I can certainly share those. But thank you for acknowledging that. And we do bring in both types of business through our meetings and convention sales division. There are, you know, all business is good business, and so ensuring that it has the right home in the city is really important to our team.
Thank you.
First one page. First, did you have your hand up?
No.
I've already spoken.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. We will transition to the Sandler Center. We don't have, everybody does have a hard copy, and we'll roll with that. If we don't have, I'm not sure what happened, it's loaded up. Okay, so I do apologize for those that are listening and watching, and this will be made available on our website. All of our audit reports are public documents. You don't have to do a FOIA. It's on the vbgov.com/cityauditor. All right, so typical, so for the Sandler Center, we show you a slide of attendance and total events. So on page three, it shows there is a, there was obviously a big dip for, during the COVID lockdowns. So fiscal year '22, which we had a full year's worth of data, it has continued to rebound as well as into fiscal year '23. On page four, just like, similar to what On page four, just like similar to what we presented for the convention center, it shows the amount of city funding. And for the last full year's worth of data, we are about at $750,000 where the city is providing funding. Okay? And there's also the management and incentive fee. For the last year, we're showing $80,231. That is included as part of the city funding. Okay? Part five, again, it shows expenses, which is the orange line, and the revenues. So expenses are exceeding the revenue. And on page six, that's the difference. So for fiscal year 22, where we had the full data, it was about $463,000 where expenses exceeded the revenue. On page seven, we have the admission taxes. And I just wanted to note that of the $178,347, the latest figures of admission taxes, that does not include the admission taxes collected by the nine resident groups. Okay? And I would be remiss if I didn't point out in our discussion with Emily and Sandler Center folks, when the Sandler Center was designed, and many of you were involved or a part of that, the seating, the ensuring the residence groups had a place to perform does impact how much, how many events they can bring in, as well as if you're limited, and how many national events, because you're working with the residence groups, that does impact the revenue. Okay? So it was always, and Emily wanted to point out, that it was always an understanding that there would be general funding from this, general fund money from the city to help augment any difference. Okay? All right, so just getting into the findings, and the findings were very minimal, and just as, just like the convention center from an operation standpoint, I think Oakview Group, under David Simone's leadership, they do a great job in making the experience. And we, I know we've all attended events at the Sandler Center, to making it a, a great customer service experience, great acts, including our, including our resident groups. So the, so the overall, the findings were pretty minor. Finding one, obviously, there's an incentive fee component. And so we just noted there was one error that was made, and they have credited us once that error was brought to their attention. So that's regarding the incentive fee calculation. Finding number two, the number of guaranteed yearly qualifying events was not met. And again, all, everything we were looking at was based off of the operating agreement. What does the operating agreement state, and what was actually executed? Okay? So on page 11, you can see where the, what we call the qualifying shows. Those are your bigger, bigger, more national shows. They don't include the resident groups. So the guarantee was 37. And when they do not meet, they are assessed a penalty, which they do pay. During COVID, obviously, they did not meet their number of qualifying shows. So we, we did agree to waive that penalty. All right, and on page 12, basically, simple recommendation, just to monitor the schedule, work closely together, just to ensure we're bringing in the 37 shows per our agreement. Because obviously, you bring in more shows, it generates more direct, as well as indirect revenue. And the last finding on page 13, promotional packages not created. The operating agreement says the manager, which is Oakview Group, agrees to spend $10,000 per operating year to create a variety of promotional packages that will advertise events, so forth, outside of the area. I think there was some misunderstanding regarding that requirement. And so that has not been done. And so on page 14, we had the recommendations, resume compliance with the first portion of that section, where it is required to spend $10,000 to advertise the events. And for the years it was missed, determine the amount of credit due. All right, and so that wraps that up. Overall, we determined, except as noted, that appropriate policies, procedures, process were in place. I think David and Oakview Group, they, they do a great job. And the partnership between Emily and Beth, working on behalf of the city with Oakview Groups, does make the Sandler Center a jewel in our community, as well as a jewel nationally. I think it's well-deserving to be renowned for. It's just a beautiful facility and the acts they bring. Any comments or questions?
Well, both of these projects were built about the same time. I think they were both approved during that year that we called the major projects funding, and we did a lot of changing in the way we did funding because of these projects. So that means that they both probably are pretty close to paying off the debt. Is that correct?
Yes. So Kevin's nodding his head, so yes, close.
Kind of makes me a little bit concerned about, all right, that means they're 20 years old. How is the maintenance and the, and the condition of these facilities? And are we looking at any major concerns as far as the age of these facilities? And how are we doing with that aspect of it?
Yes.
So that one, that's, we have this program in the CIP as it relates to the convention center and the Sandler Center. I think the convention center just recently went through a full rehab of its carpets. Anything else?
Carpets, wall coverings are next. We're doing some aging work and some technology upgrades. As you mentioned, that's building stage, you have to engage with them. So the city has invested over time to ensure the CIP carpets are covered.
And there is a healthy fund balance around $30 million in tip that could be used to support additional needs if there's emergencies that arise in the facilities.
Well, it's, I know neither of them needed the pandemic, and it set them both back in their ability to meet expectations. So we do have something to work on there. But they, I think both came out to be very important projects. And although we don't like seeing the expenses exceeding the revenue in both of them, I think that probably has something to do with the pandemic and the loss in those eight years. And now you're going to be having to recover for both of them. But by and large, I think it's, it's certainly good. But I think from the standpoint of the maintenance and the ongoing time, we want to make sure that you're where we should be with those projects. I guess we'll look at that each year with the budget. Thank you.
Anybody else? Josh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, thank you to Mr. Ramias, and also to Ms. Hellman and Mr. Simone, who I see back there as well. You know, when we look at these, you know, revenues under expenses, I just want to emphasize that, you know, I, and I see this firsthand, because I maintain an office and work in Town Center, the tremendous direct and indirect economic and community benefits that both of these facilities, you know, provide to the public, in particular, our schools. I mean, I see school buses lining up and down Bank Street, you know, during the school year for the, for the programming that exists and the many number of community events that come through our convention center. So there, there is a, there's a bigger, better story to be told than, than what these graphs may provide. And.
You can't put a price on arts.
Arts and arts, I guess you can't put a price on it. But, but there is a, there is a intrinsic
Yes.
value that, that these facilities have to our, our community, and especially for the arts, entertainment and culture. So, and to the surrounding businesses that are extremely busy, at least in and around Town Center, that I've seen from when, when, when events are being put on at the Sandler Center. So, and a tremendous amount of activity generated around this.
Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. I do understand the intrinsic value, yet the taxpayers have doled out almost $3 million over the last, I guess, four years. Page four, city funding, with $390,000 in management incentive fees. It looks like we skipped, or we, we didn't do any advertising for the $10,000. That's one of the issues that we found. So outside of continuing to monitor the number of qualified shows, we look at the oceanfront programming, which has increased significantly. Funding has increased significantly in events going to the oceanfront. What are we doing outside of monitoring in terms of strategy to bring these events in? Because there is a taxpayer cost, although it is intrinsically valuable. In any other business, if we continue to fall short year by year, a valid question would be, what is the strategy to make up? Or do we reduce the number of guaranteed shows? Because we've yet to hit that. So could you maybe speak to that, please?
Yes, and I do have Beth. Do you want to address that, or maybe David? In regards to strategies for, are we, is there a strategy in regards to closing that gap? You know, I did mention from Emily's perspective, there was always going to be, to be a gap. And I do know they, they do work, they do work closely. So David, if you want to come up and, David is the general manager of the Sandler Center, I guess, from the onset? Do you want to take that question?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council. We already have 21 qualifying events booked for the fiscal year 24, which we're currently in, just started July 1. So I feel pretty confident that we're going to get there. You know, we do have nine active resident groups, and they do get booking priority. And they get financial advantages by being a resident group. So, you know, making them successful is really front of mind. You know, we, we do have to bridge that gap. We are paying the penalty, so the taxpayers are benefiting from, from that relief. So I think we're going to get there. I'm an optimist. But the, the quality of the shows that we're producing are filling the venue, and they're filling Town Center. The residual impact, financial impact at Town Center, as, as Councilmember Schumann would tell you, is, is, it's hard to put a figure on. We have done financial impact studies that state that over $30 is spent outside of the ticket purchase, whether it might be, you know, a hotel stay or a restaurant visit. So the taxes that are realized by those residual spends are worthy of mentioning. When you put all of that together, I think we are in net positive. I don't think we are a deficit. And from when we opened in 2007, our subsidy has, has decreased by 50%. So I could go on, but.
A follow-up. Did your staff, because we're just seeing this now in the, in the audit, did your staff notify the manager that you all hadn't received that promotional package or weren't seeing anything related to the $10,000?
Have we notified them?
I mean, during that year, in that actual year?
That's probably more on Emily's side.
So, yeah. We were, our company was sold during that period. And we had been affiliated with Comcast. And that's when we had made this proposal during a renewal period, that we would do an out-of-market spend in the Richmond market, because we had a partnership with Comcast, who owns that market. And that was my misunderstanding. When I read it, I said, while we were affiliated with Comcast, and this is in the contract, in the management agreement, while we were affiliated with Comcast, we would spend $10,000 in that, in that market. So it was my misunderstanding when I read it. I said, well, we're no longer affiliated with Comcast, because we were sold, that we no longer were obligated to make that spend. Lyndon brought it up during the audit, that, you know, we still owed $10,000, that it was Comcast actually adding to that to make it a $20,000 spend. So that was my misunderstanding of the management agreement, this 67-page management agreement. And we have reimbursed the city for those, for that, for my misunderstanding.
Last question, Vice Mayor. Ms. Hellman, we just went through the rebranding and all the new videos, exciting. Was Sandler Center included in that advertisement of our new release of the new logo and the image brand?
Actually, no, they're their own standalone brand, and they work for the arts. But that's definitely something I think as the city looks into the future, if we want to put all of our venues in sort of the same brand, I think that's something that's worthy of looking into. But no, it was really the economic vitality portfolio assets. That would be the convention center, sports center, and that sort of makeup of course and assets. But you bring up a good point, it's worthy of looking into.
Thank you.
Emily?
I'd just like to say thanks again to Emily and her team for what all they do. I remember when I first came on, and we were looking at how much they would get per person, and how the city had grown. And at that time, the council agreed to increase the funding. But one special thing they've done is that BB gigs, where it's the global inspired groups, bringing many other cultures to the table. And I remember Dot Wood was part of making sure that my marginalized children are safe and comfortable without paying the typical amount. So those things outweigh a lot. Sometimes it's not all about the funds, but the heart. As a artist myself, I enjoy, you know, what they bring to the table, other work with each other, and how both areas, the Virginia Beach Convention Center and the Sandler Center complement each other. And asset, when we have a lot of sports groups coming to town, guess where they go after? Over to the Sandler Center. And I'm a proud District Four, because they are in District Four.
There you go.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a comment. I was on the council with Barbara when we approved the Sandler Center. And it was at a time when we told, we tore the pavilion down, and that was our only city theater. And it was pretty small, actually. And at that time, we said, you know, we are the largest city in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and our citizens deserve a nice theater. And we put a lot of thought into it. And Barbara, I remember, you probably remember the men around the table when they had to learn what aubergine meant, which was the color that they put throughout the, the inside, and the, the grillage, lighting the bag. Then, so the, especially the men had to learn a lot of new terms. And that was, it was just really a lot of fun. Plus, Dot Wood and Lynwood Branch went out and raised 35 million, I believe. Something like $35 million from our community, because they believed that we needed a wonderful theater as well. And David, you do a great job. You really do. And there are programs set up so that there are children who have never set foot in a theater before, who are able to go in there and see a performance and have the opportunities that they would not have had otherwise. And I don't believe we ever thought that it was going to be a big moneymaker. But our parks. parks don't make any money either. And our police department doesn't make any money either. This is a cultural portion of our city. It, it does help pay for itself, but it's not 100%. I mean, keep trying. Don't get, I'm not saying, don't give them, you know, keep trying, but it's just a great part of our city and it has done so much. And, and to this day, whenever I walk in, that, those beautiful, that front that's so beautiful with all the glass, it still gives me a thrill and that, that's part of our city. And when the people go there, they go and they eat out or they're, they come and they spend the night. There's a lot of economic impact that maybe is not in this report. So I'm very grateful that we have the Sandler Center and the Convention Center. You think about the Convention Center, that whoever knew it was going to be set up to be giving vaccine, vaccinations to all of our citizens during the pandemic. I don't think we ever dreamed it was going to be utilized for something like that. So these are two really great community assets. Barbara?
In mentioning the decision with the, thinking back to the controversy, I think one of the controversies was that we were taking the theater from the Oceanfront and to the town center and that was a big issue, whether it was to be at town center or not. And so this entertainment facility that we're going to be building now with the Atlantic Park is going to help fulfill that commitment that I think we made at that time, that we would recognize that we needed some facility of that nature at the Oceanfront as well. And it did take 20 years, but we are getting there. And so I, I think that that's a very important thing to remember, that we, we were concerned about moving it to the, the town center, but I think that's worked very well, too. But now we'll be back to having a good theater at the Ocean Park, which I think is also needed.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation, for being with us today.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And on another note, while it's not in the Sandler Center, but I'll let the residents know it's in the shadow of the Sandler Center. They have Why Not, Why Not Wednesdays out there and that's a lot of fun. There's a lot of folks out there gathered around.
That is the Sandler Center.
There we go. See, there we go.
And people from every district are there.
See, there, there we go.
Okay, Mr. Manager, you're on.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of, Madam Mayor, Acting Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. At this time, Kevin Chataleire will come and provide counsel with an overview of the current school revenue formula and also to bring the council's attention that the agreement expires next June and will be seeking your guidance as it relates to next steps with the funding formula.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As City Manager just notified you all, the purpose of today's presentation is to talk about the current revenue sharing formula and the importance of the revenue sharing formula and the reason why we're bringing this up at this point in time. So under the current formula, it's set to have a review by or expiration or review by or extend date of June 30th, 2024. So the end of the current fiscal year, the formula is set to expire. And so a decision's going to be, need to be made prior to that point in time, especially as we go into the FY25 budget development process, whether we're going to be looking to revise the current formula or extend the current one as is. So included in the presentation I'm going to be providing today is a little quick overview of school funding and the revenue sources that support their operations, city-school relationship, historical overview in terms of the revenue sharing formula over the many years it's been in place, some highlights of the existing formula, as well as a quick benchmark of other localities that are utilizing a revenue sharing formula in their operations. And then at the conclusion, hopefully seek direction from council and get some guidance as to whether they would like us to move forward and engage school staff to work to revise or update the formula or work with school staff to see if they're interested in terms of extending the formula as is for another year. So as you can see on this slide here, school's operations is about a $1.2 billion operation. So the table summarizes the buckets of revenue that support their operations at a fairly high level at state, federal, miscellaneous, local level. So that includes charges for services within the cafeteria fund and different things like that. And then obviously the transfer from the city, which is determined by the revenue sharing formula. You can see that the $512 million that they received through that's the school's largest local, the school's largest revenue source about, supporting about 44% of their overall operations, with the second largest being the state at about 41%. So this summary table is certainly a high-level roll-up of that. There are several buckets within that state allocation, that's just a single number, but schools do receive lottery funds, they receive state aid for basic operations or to support the SOQ, you'll hear that referred to, which is the Standards of Quality Programs or Basic Aid. And schools receive a direct allocation of a sales tax from the state. Being that we're a Dillon Rule state, much of our relationship with schools is defined within state code and the framework of our relationship with them can be found in state code. So the school board is an elected board. State code allows them to be elected, although the state's very particular in that the taxing authority is to remain with the governing body, or in this case, City Council. So, but the state lays out guidelines in that to maintain a certain level, minimum level of quality standards throughout the Commonwealth, that each locality is required to provide a minimum level of funding to their school district. So that's a index calculation performed by the state each year as part of their budget development process and it creates a minimum amount that each locality or county must provide to their local school district. Although the state, it says that the amount is to be determined to be provided, it also determines how, one or two methods as to how the locality allocates that to schools. It can be done in either lump sum form, which is the way Virginia Beach has done it since 2016, or it can be done by category and the state defines those as nine major categories. Once the funds have been appropriated to school board or to the school's operating budget, there's limited ability for the local governing body to have influence over the prioritization or use of those funds once the school's budget has been adopted. To put a control in place, the state budget says the schools are not allowed to overexpend their operations or exceed their appropriation authority as established by City Council. If they do, then they're guilty of malfeasance in office. Those with a long memory might recall that back in 1996, this actually happened within the Virginia Beach school system and that the schools expended their, over, they exceeded their appropriation authority at the end of the year by about $12 million, resulting in a grand jury being called and led to the calling for seven resignations of elected officials. So it's, I bring that up because it's an important point in time in history that has certainly shaped school's operations to this day. Schools are currently using several financial controls that are in place to prevent that from ever happening again. And in fact, it's, you know, could lead them to be a little conservative in their utilization of funds, which sometimes results in a year-end surplus, which is a good segue into the next bullet point down there, in that state code does not allow the schools' operating budgets to maintain a fund balance. So City Council often hears this referred to as a reversion process. So since schools are not allowed to have a fund balance, at the end of the year, any unused funds are to revert back to the governing body or the state. And what schools will do is they'll approach City Council and they'll request that those funds be re-appropriated in the following year's operating budget to support said services outlined in an approved resolution. So this is also something that the state's very particular about and sometimes the court has intervened in looking at this as well. Point in case, back in 2012, the city of Portsmouth Schools, their year-end closeout processes got called into question and went under review of the court system. And then what they were looking at is the Portsmouth School System was not allowed to maintain a fund balance, but at, prior to the end of the year, they were redirecting those funds to the CIP. So this court system was looking at that and whether it was allowable per state law or not. So again, like I said, the state code is very particular in our relationship with schools and the cans and can't do's. And the last bullet point and something City Council might be familiar with, with the most recent budget process, is to ensure that schools have information in a timely manner per the state code, localities, or to approve an operating budget no later than May 15th of the fiscal year. And so schools can have adequate time to prepare for their needs. Some historical, historical notable references related to the school funding formula. So looking back in time, back in 1994, school became, school board became elected officials. So in between that point in time and when the budget or the first revenue sharing formula was adopted and utilized in the development of the 97, 98 operating budget, my understanding is there were several years of pretty contentious budget battles that was occurring. And both elected bodies were, there was concerns and complaints that it was very difficult to do long-term sustainable planning of resources and needs whenever each had their own priorities in the utilization and the drawdown of those finite amount of resources. So ultimately, a policy was put in place to establish the first revenue sharing formula in which schools begin utilizing at that point in time and allow them to prioritize their needs, whether it be in the operating budget or the CIP, but they were allowed to do that and have that flexibility to use those funds for that purpose. Policies remained pretty much unchanged for a number of years through the 2000s with some adjustments up and down to account for changes in revenue sources or state code changes of, for example, in 2006, the state assumed several local taxes that were previously part of the revenue sharing formula and created the telecom tax. So the revenue formula had to be updated to account for that. In the Great Recession around 2010, the existing formula really kind of came into question as what schools were experiencing was they were being pinched from both ends. So we were experiencing local revenue loss here within the city and the state was also reducing its contribution for schools and eliminating things such as state construction funding. So in the development of FY12, 13 operating budget, that process actually did not utilize a revenue sharing formula, but instead it was more of a needs-based operating budget proposal submitted by schools. And after a thorough review, City Council authorized that year a, a tax increase of which, for since, was dedicated to schools to help offset, maintain, provide continuous services and not allow the reduction in revenues to negatively impact the school system.
Election here, too. We raised six cents.
It, it, it was certainly controversial, I recall.
I remember.
At the direction of council and the school board, staff were to get together and look to revise the revenue sharing formula. And so in 2013 and 14, a new formula was developed. A couple of important components of that is that there was a review by or extend by date that was identified in that and the purpose of that was to ensure that the policy didn't become stale over time. Another important component at that point in time was that the base calculation took into account the SOQ or the state minimum quality, if, minimum level of funding to be provided to schools per state code. The policy remained in place for several years. In fact, in between FY14 and FY21 was last updated, there was even a time or two where it was just extended as is for a year. The most recent, the current formula that we have was most recently revised in FY1920. An important component is that the SOQ quality component was removed from it. So something that was experienced during that duration of time was that incorporating that as a core part of the calculation was actually counterproductive is the very reason that the policy was put in place. That number comes so late in the budget process and it can swing fairly, quite a bit in between any given year to where we would be near February and March of the budget process. We'd get the number from the state and then there could be as much of a $10 million swing in between the city and schools that we were needing to reconcile that late in the budget So some high-level talking points about the current formula that's in place is that local funding that is shared with schools is allocated in a manner which allows schools to establish their existing priority or place funding towards what their priorities are, whether it's the operating budget, CIP, as a means of financing either PEGO or to support debt service. To, in order to request additional funding above the current revenue sharing formula, schools are required to make a formal action and a written request to City Council in terms of the gap that's been identified, what's needed to close that gap, whether it be through the form of a tax increase or additional revenue to support it. The third bullet point there talks about the largest local revenue sources within the general fund, which are the least volatile, have been selected to be the revenue sources that are shared with schools. And I'd be, I'd miss an opportunity to talk about those three bullet points in that if you go back in time and look at the original policy adopted by City Council in February 1997, those three components were critical to the original policy that was put in place back then and they're still relevant to this day. Looking a little bit more granular look, city and schools revenue share split is 46.75% of revenues go to the schools with the city retaining 53.25 in importance. Talking point about that is it's not just the budgeted revenue allocation, but also in terms of what's actually received in any given year. So city and schools both share in the actual realization of those revenues. And then the existing policy has a very formal layout as to what the process is for schools to make the requests of City Council for the reversion use of funds in the following fiscal year. This slide just provides a reflection of what the calculation looks like, which is included in the operating budget. I know the numbers are small. I apologize, but just circled on the screen, you can see that the total amount provided to schools is $512.9 million, which is roughly about $320 million over the state minimum level of funding required to provide schools. After 25 years of implementation of the revenue sharing formula, there's certainly some benefits and challenges that we've seen over the years. So it is in fact a predictable tool in resource planning and allocation to put towards prioritization and needs. It does provide the flexibility for both city and schools in terms of long-term and planning purposes. It allows the city a great deal of transparency to be able to point to a number and identify the amount of funding that's being provided to schools to support their operations. Over time, it has reduced the friction between City Council and the school board and the budget deliberation process. And again, it is equal in that it shares, allows city and schools both to share in the economic, when the economy's going well, and it also allows them to equally share whenever things are going bad in the economy. Challenges over time, everything's not perfect. It does provide a limited amount of flexibility when an emergency need comes up. So a good example of this is at the beginning of the pandemic, when City Council wanted to make a decision to provide a meals tax holiday. There was just an extra step that needed to be communicated and thought through in terms of, okay, if we, schools share in this revenue stream, so if we reduce this, how are we going to be impacting schools? The current formula does not account for state and federal aid changes. And the third bullet point there, the number three, the calculation doesn't account for change in demand for services, whether they be increases or decreases. Examples of those could be unfunded state or federal mandates or changing in student enrollment, which could have an impact on the overall needs and demand for services from schools. So this slide is a benchmark comparison of some other localities and counties that utilize a revenue sharing formula. We're mindful in trying to find benchmark localities because it's, there's a lot of different nuances out there. So the localities we took a look at were Hampton City, Chesapeake City, Norfolk, Roanoke City, Prince George County, Roanoke County and Arlington County. We're particular, particularly mindful when looking at counties as state code's got some different language in there with schools' relationship with counties. So you can see that just below the titles are the points in time around which each of these localities developed a revenue sharing formula policy between the school board and elected bodies. And then the table includes the checkmarks. If there's a checkmark, then the formulas adopted by those localities include that component. So for example, the top row there includes local tax revenues. The next one down being that certain dedications are removed from the split allocation that's to occur between the city and locality or entity. The funding formulas address the capital budgets, capital CIP programs in some way, shape or form. And then there's typically a formal process when reviewing each of these policies that the locality has in place in which the schools are to make a formal request for additional funds above and beyond the formula. As you get down towards the bottom of the table, you'll see that there's some, a little bit As you get down towards the bottom of the table, you'll see that there's some, a little bit more breakage and discrepancies. So the next one down includes the ADM. So the ADM stands for average daily membership and population ratio. So majority of the localities don't do that. However, Prince George and Roanoke County, they have it as a part of their overall calculation that takes into account a five-year and a three-year rolling average of student enrollment to determine some level of needs. The second to last, when looking at the other formulas, we weren't really defined, able to find any level of consistency in terms of formulas that were adjusted up or down as a part of the calculation to account for changes in state and federal funding. We've, in looking at Norfolk's and Hampton's, we were able to find that they have a loose formal agreement that if there are significant changes, then they'll reconvene to discuss the local contribution with those changes. And then the last bullet point there being that per the formulas, all of the, the comparison entities, the local contribution exceeded, exceeded the state minimum requirement to be provided per state code. So at this point, we would just like to try to engage council and receive some level of direction as to how they would like us to proceed forward. So we could certainly begin working with school staff to brainstorm and look to revise or update the existing formula. And at which time we could bring that recommendations or considerations back to city council for the consideration at the joint meeting with schools during the five-year forecast timeframe in November. Or alternatively, it has occurred in the past. We, you could provide direction to engage schools to see if there's interest in extending the formula on an as-is basis for a period of time. There's certainly, you know, for consideration, there's certainly a lot of changes going on with schools. They're in search of a new superintendent, but they're also undergoing a PPEA process, which as of now, the costs have not fully been determined. So I don't know that schools are in a position to be able to articulate what their full needs are in light of what those costs are going to ultimately be.
And Madam Vice Mayor, before you turn to council for comment and questions, it's important to note too as well is that this is, we're briefing council. If council asks us to talk to schools, schools may have a different point of view on what they think next steps are. So we may, we may want to continue and ask to negotiate a new school funding formula to bring forward to you all. But they may want an extension as well. So we would need to engage school staff to get a sense of where they are as well.
Well, today sort of like been a walk down memory lane.
It tied in very well with the previous.
Especially for Barbara and I, and I, and I know she remembers this well. I was on the school board at the time and Barbara was on the city council and it was like war. It was in the paper headlines, like every other day of the fighting between the two bodies. It was really, really terrible. And the formula gave stability. It took that aggressiveness away from, it was, you know, there was things like the ghost positions that were complained about. And oh, it was really, so the formula, it's not perfect. And, and I know that there are people think, well, it should always be needs-based. But it really has helped have a good relationship between the two bodies. And, and I think it's, I think we deserve, I think our citizens deserve us to be able to work together for the benefit of the city and our children. So it's, it's been a really good thing and I, I think we were probably the one, the first in the state to do it. And Patty Phillips also would go to the VML conferences and all and explain to the different municipalities of how it worked, because I remember I'm going with her and how, and that's why you've seen so many people adopt this. I too have concerns is, the school board is going through a lot right now. You may not know this, but the very most important thing that the school board does is hire their superintendent. That's the biggest job that they do. And now they're going to be having to go through that process. So hiring the superintendent is going to be looming really big in their, in their future right now. And I think this PPA, who, gosh, it's so big, none of us can really get our arms around it right now. So I think we need to talk to them and consider putting it off for a year if we need to. You know, before we go back and renegotiate, that's kind of what my thoughts are. Anyway, I just wanted to give you, this is a very good presentation, Kevin. Chris?
Madam Vice Mayor, thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to slide eight, please? So number four, reduce frictions and budget planning between two independently elected boards. Can you give us an idea? You may have to come back, but for years, say 2019, 20, 21, 22, did revenue underperform?
No, sir. So it was, I can tell you, at the beginning of the pandemic, we cut revenues significantly in terms of our estimation of what they were going to be. Schools shared in that reduction. The following years, revenues exceeded our expectations, the economy rebounded quicker. And at that point in time, you might recall hearing it in the news about the level of funding that schools were requesting for reversion or the reappropriation the following year. They were higher than usual. Typically historically, it's about $20 million. And in those years, it was upwards of close to $40 million, a component of which was largely being driven by revenues exceeding the pandemic low budget estimates that were put into place.
That's kind of leading to my next question, and you may have to get back to us. But for the public, say the last five years, could you give us, whether today or in the next meeting, a total of reversion funds, the request reversion that's gone back to them? Because number four, I guess individually, I experienced some friction this year in budget planning where we really couldn't even look at an idea of, of cutting taxes because we didn't have that conversation with the school board. There was never any follow-up. So get how, if we're looking at the future, we have the PPEA, which is been a big issue. They couldn't find a penny this year. What happens if we were to underperform? What does that do for the relationship? If we underperform, say 30 or 40 million dollars, how would they continue to pay the teachers that we just gave a raise? These are some of the questions I've received from eight, District Eight.
I'd be glad to do that, provide the last five-year history of the reversion funds provided to schools. Yes, sir.
Barbara? Well, I think for us as well as everybody in the state, the big thing going forward is going to be the capital cost. And there used to be a particular fund that the state had for capital projects. But I think we're away with that. The lottery was sold to the public when the public voted as going to be additional money to education. And it was for the first couple of years, but then it got to be just a part of the state payment. I think if we were to go back to allowing the lottery to do what it was supposed to do and be additional money, that might be help to all of the city, all of the state. Because it would be additional money that then could be used for capital expenses. Because that's the way Virginia Beach was, that's how we started our whole project of redoing the schools. We dedicated the lottery money for the capital projects. But then the lottery money just got absorbed in the state allocation. And so I think the whole thing, the two big things I see are changes in the state funding to us. Because it depends a lot on the lottery. But when they reduce the state sales tax on food, that I'm assuming had some impact on what they're paying for schools, too.
There's a separate breakout in the state allocation. It's called a hold harmless allocation. So yes, schools receive a direct general sales allocation from schools, roughly equaled about 1% of the total general sales that happens within Virginia Beach. So when the food tax was eliminated or reduced by the state, the state put funding in place for a hold harmless component of the amount that they were to provide schools. And so it was, in looking at it in the 23 budget, but also there's a placeholder in looking at the state's website for an allocation of a hold harmless component in the FY 24 budget as well.
The state has been doing very well with their taxes for the last few years. But you know, things will change and I think we'll have to look to the time when that, that might happen. But I just really see this whole thing with the capital program. And I think maybe it's something that we ought to be working with, with other localities as well. Because everybody is going to be faced with these astronomical costs of reducing schools or building schools and so forth. I think we're going to need to really look at that together. And it may be the lottery money is a good place to, to look.
That was, the lottery fund was used for loans. We still had to pay it back, but it was extremely low interest. So it helped to be able to utilize that money for loans.
But I think the impression that the public has still is that, well, I can buy my lottery tickets and I'm helping schools. Well, it kind of was the first couple of years, but then it got to be just replacing the, the other money.
It's the plan of their other funding.
It's a plan of the other money. So it's not additional money anymore. It's just a part of the state funding. So I think that might be a place to look. And I think we could all, if we work together with all localities, because we've got to be all facing the same thing.
We might want to make it part of our legislative package and then also call on VML and VACO to make this a priority in theirs. Josh?
I'll yield to council number one. Sir, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Chaloner. I would, I would agree with the Vice Mayor in that we should certainly start with communication with the school board and the school division. And perhaps we go into that conversation with those couple of challenges presented to them and just say, here's, here's where some of our trouble spots are. And let's, let's, let's talk through some of these issues and get to, get to a better place that, that everybody can agree to. You know, the one, the one challenge I see on there that number two doesn't account for state, federal aid changes. I was just wondering, just in review of the policy and 7-1 of the policy requires the superintendent, the manager, school CFO, the budget director to meet annually to discuss changes in state and federal revenues that support schools' operation and to make adjustments to existing revenues affecting the formula. So I was just kind of wondering, is this challenge, is that there isn't that kind of, that automatic valve?
Yes, that's, that's what I was talking about, the challenge as opposed to being a, a direct part. So one of the things the funding formula does not do is a part of the overall calculation, there's nothing that takes into account their total operational budget needs and changes that might happen in state, federal funding within that to see growth one year to the next year. It kind of happens independent and also kind of happens late in the budget process. I mean, here we are where the state was in, in the adoption of the 24 budget. It was really uncertain all the way up to, so it creates a level of uncertainty very late in the budget process to be able to take a review of what those needs are, to be able to bring anything to city council, that budget process into consideration for, you know, alteration.
Okay, just a follow-up question in terms of reversion money. Are we able just theoretically to encourage or replace some guidelines associated with the use of those reversion funds, considering we've got, you know, a significant aging buildings and capital costs?
Can I answer that question? So two years ago, when we met with the School Construction Committee, I made the request that they needed to be putting a larger percentage into school construction. And the phrase, let's get something built. And so they went back and they reworked it. And so they put a lot more money into school construction. And then this year, when they sent it, you saw there was a huge amount of money that was put into school construction. So we can make suggestions, because we have to vote on that. So whether they get it or not, or you know, so we certainly have input into that.
I guess, and thank you, and one, one last just suggestion, considering the lottery money is gone. Legislative agenda, and I know we can talk about this another day, but just an idea. I know that a lot of the cigarette tax has been lost to vaping. And I know vaping has been a situation where more and more students are doing that in schools. So to try and recapture some of that and to add into schools is something maybe we should talk about.
It was in our package this year and it didn't get anywhere, but we can do it again.
Thank you.
Does it require reversion money in one time only?
Yes. That's what we want to know.
That is correct. And Vice Mayor, if, if I may, in doing the benchmarking, Councilmember Schulman, in looking at some of their localities, part of the reversion process outlined, some of the entities had policies per the formula in place to where a certain percentage of the amount to be reverted was to be redirected automatically to either a reserve fund, like a, you know, to either create a rainy day or a capital fund, which I would imagine would be kind of what you were talking about with the, speaking of the lottery funds and concern with the construction dollars. But do you think things like that are possible?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chaloner. Just a question and a comment on, up here on state and federal aid changes. Do you have any idea over the past 20 years, any trends? Has it remained within fairly constant percentage? And what percentage is that for both state and federal? If you don't, maybe you can, is it less than 10% of our, of the overall schools' budget?
I would, I would need to look at it, Councilmember. Not off the top of my head. It's not ringing a bell. And I think there's been ups and downs. I know there were several years where it was just flat from the state, where the state was not providing any additional resources. To Councilmember Henley's point earlier, state construction dollars just fell off. We were excited in looking at last year's operating budget, whenever the state provided schools with about $15 million in state construction funds, we were like thinking, okay, maybe this is coming back. And looking at the state's website, nothing's allocated for that purpose in FY 24. So we might be back to that trend again.
So overall, state and federal is approximately 10% or less than 10%?
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, you've already covered that.
So.
There you go. I'm sorry. Yeah, I got it.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. I think the school, the budget formula is a good template. And whether the percent is right, this body in the school board can certainly discuss that. But I think each, every time we approve a budget, you're already looking for the next year's budget. So you really need to, it's a big, big part of our budget is the schools. So I like the template and certainly the concept and the ideas of it, so.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Sorry to lighten this a little bit more. But I, and I, and I know we've lived in a very challenging and different kind of economic environment these last couple of years. But where we've got overperforming revenues, like we've had on the one hand, and then how many, like $170 million of CIP, like basically cuts. I just, I, I hope we can find some, someplace where we can, where we can identify some of these, you know, outer marker boundary areas where if we're experiencing something that is, that is clearly outside of the norm, where we've got a little bit more leeway and control to, to help fund our, our side of the house. So, and I say that obviously with respect and, you know, appreciation for our schools. But we, we need to have, I think, a little bit better control in situations where, where things are just not, where, where things are not following the everyday kind of rules. So I just put that out there.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Kevin, do you have the, the actual policy document?
Yes, sir.
I guess number 633, it's under the reversion. Can you help me understand that a little bit better, especially as we're going into the PPE negotiations with significantly increased construction costs?
So, okay, so what that's speaking to is whenever we develop any operating budget, assumptions are made in terms of the debt service projected costs whenever we're appropriating the funds. So we provide that, an estimate of that to schools as well. So a lot of things go into that, their estimates. By the time finance gets into it later on in the year, say there's been a change, market's adjusted, we assume too low of an interest rate, or we assume too few of eligible bonds. So what finance might do is restructure the debt a little bit to meet the existing appropriations, but it might not be the exact way that we had provided to schools in terms of an estimate. So this is just acknowledging that as part of that reversion formula, that before anything, you know, once anything's remitted, if there is a need for a true-up to cover the school's debt service component, it will occur before any consideration of appropriating it for other one-time purposes. The same thing's true. An important component of this is that prior to the reversion of any funds, the city's general fund is to maintain its fund balance, fund balance policy of eight to 12%. If for some reason things were not trending that way and it was going to be below the 8%, then the school funding formula or the reversion request would first and foremost go towards that to make that hold, because that's really everything in terms of our bond ratings and everything for the city.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Vice Mayor, members of council, I think we need a little guidance from council as it relates to how would you like us to approach the schools? Vice Mayor, you mentioned that you were leaning towards, and I'm trying to get a sense that the rest of council leaning towards us possibly asking for an extension to the current agreement? Or does council want us to approach the schools to negotiate a new agreement in time for you all to adopt this part of the budget ahead of it expiring June of next year?
I think it's a tough time for them, and they don't have, you know, until they get a superintendent and get a little bit further along this PPA process. I mean, it's working for now, that, what we have. And, and we need to include them in the conversation before we make a decision.
All right, so we'll approach schools and we'll, we'll tell schools we're leaning towards extending for another year.
And question was asked, what do we do in hard times when we lost? Well, that happened with the housing crisis. I mean, General Assembly cut the budget $80 million, $80 million. And so everybody just had to, their raises were given for three or four years and, but everybody kept their jobs. And we had some attrition that, you know, maybe people left and we didn't fill in, but we, we got through it. But that's why in 2012, we just couldn't continue to sustain things. And that's why even though it was election year, we raised real estate taxes by six cents and two cents went to transportation.
Correct.
Because we needed, roads needed to be paved and we were having a lot of crises with the crises, with the roads, but also, and we lockboxed it for four cents to go to schools and two cents to go to transportation. So you, you, you kind of have to figure it out as you get there. But we, we've been there before and we got through it. But everybody had to feel the pain. You did a masterful job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to city comments. I'd like to, I'm sure everybody is getting questions from our constituents about yard debris, trash pickup. And I know, I know that we're, we're behind because we're short staffed. And can you give us a picture moving forward of how we're dealing with this? And do we think we're going to be able to get up to speed with everybody and sort of be where we need to be?
Yeah. Yeah, Vice Mayor, the Public Works Director spoke to this last week. And I'll give, yeah, I'll give council a update. So I think right now what we're doing is it's all hands on deck. You know, I think they're working, the crews are moved from working four days a week to six days a week. The director articulated that we're prioritizing the black can pickups, right? So the black can picks up, pack, pick, will be picked up and prioritized before everything else. And they're also recommending if people can't wait for the crews to come back around for yard waste, that at this time temporarily they can use the, they can put the yard waste inside the black can and we'll address it that way. What we've found is that since, since July 1, a lot of different cities have made changes to their compensation for waste management. We're reviewing that as well to make sure that we stay in line and stay competitive above and beyond. But we got a shortage right now. The shortage stems from, we have a lot of limited duty staff that can't pick up, pick up debris and waste right now as well, but we're, we're working ahead of it and we're prioritizing making sure that we get the black can picks up and we're, we're moving. And LJ, not to put you on the spot, but you know, real quick. So I don't know if you want to come in here and address where we are with waste management.
Your timing couldn't be better, LJ.
This is really important to our citizens. I mean, it's something since like, but they want their, they want their stuff picked up.
I apologize. I, I did see the manager start to speak on the topic, so I came in, but I did miss his concluding comments, so.
Give us an update on the yard debris and trash pickup and all of that.
As, as I talked about last week, we're still struggling with the number of vacancies. We did close an application pool. We have some potentials, but when I say some, it's a, it's a very small number of potentials. We still have a number of people that are out due to, like, they're on light duty, rather. They're unable to operate the vehicle. So we're still struggling with many of the same struggles we were a week ago. I've met with staff and talked with them a little bit about where they are and where their headspaces are. I've talked to a number of citizens and a number of, of you all. I would love to tell you that I have a magic solution. We're working on one. I'm working with Human Resources on our recruitment practices and, and some of the other things that we might try to, try to make that solution a little bit better. But today, I don't have a, I don't have a much different answer than I gave you last week, and it's not for lack of trying.
Are we doing any sign-up bonuses or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have, we have sign-up bonuses that are currently in place, and then we're looking to see if those are appropriate and whether or not it makes sense to try and adjust those. We also have a CDL bonus, that is for operators that have their commercial driver's license in the city. Again, we're looking at that to see if that's where it should be. And those are the types of things that we're working with, with Human Resources. As a matter of fact, I just got an email in the last couple of minutes telling me what, what, what we're looking at. So we are, we are working the problem.
Thank you.
Partly answered it when you said you do have a CDL bonus, because I think last week you said that's part of the problem in hiring people. And I know with all the competition with truckers out there, it's pretty hard to do that. One of the emails that we just got in the last couple of days was from somebody who said, well, you've got to make sure all of your staff can jump in and fill in the positions. And I think last week you said that some of your administrative people are doing that. And I would like for you to address just how you're, you're going about trying to get everything covered with the staff that you have.
Well, again, our priorities are focused on making sure that we're picking up the black can. That has to be our priorities. And in a couple of cases, we've been a day or two late on those. But we are caught up today, to the best of my knowledge, we're caught up on the black cans. Where we're running behind is especially noticeable in the yard waste. And that's where we have bags of grass clippings and, and leaves and that type of thing that are, that are sitting. We have, when possible, we've asked for crews from our public works operation and we're also seeking assistance from Parks and Recreation for their drivers that have commercial driver's license where they can fill in. The superintendents have filled in when they can. But it's important to note, they have roles that they need to do. And if, if they're running a truck every day, then, then they're not there to make sure that the pay gets processed correctly and the employees get paid for what they need to. On top of which, we, you know, we have a number of other things that we, that we have to be taking care of. The operations manager was in a truck last week. And so in all honesty, to the degree that, to the degree that's possible, those that are available, we've, we've got them out there and they're, and they're putting in some long hours and they're trying to, to get caught up. We are asking for the public's assistance a little bit. And, and there seems to be some miscommunication about what we're asking the public to do with regard to their, with, with regard to their yard waste bags. We're not asking you to fill up your black cans with yard waste. What we're asking is that if, before garbage day, when your black can has a little bit of space in the top, if you have some yard waste bags and you could throw them in, that would really be a help to us, rather than have to have two trucks come to, to pick that up. It takes a little bit of a burden away. We do have opportunities, you know, to use the landfill and also the Landstown and Oceana transfer stations at SIPSA, if that's something that's convenient for you. I recognize, and all of our staff recognize the inconvenience that this puts on the citizens. And one of the things that was expressed to me by my staff is they know that the Virginia Beach residents expect a high level of service. They want to deliver a high level of service, but they can only do what they can only do. And, and we can't ask them to work, you know, too long or accidents will happen and then we'll have, we'll have other issues. And, and so in all honesty, they're, they're given what they, they're given what they can. And I appreciate all that everybody's given us in terms of grace and, and leeway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. LJ, I recently received an email and I, I really want to commend you in the communications office on getting ahead of it and trying to at least get the message out. I have received several emails saying thank you, that they now understand what's going on. Someone brought up, you know, our, the vacancy savings. Do we have the option of bringing in outside, third-party vendors to, in the, in the short term to help and assist as we've done with some of the other departments in the past?
So solid waste is kind of a unique, it's kind of a unique beast. And, and I know that some of the council members here, Councilmember Berlucci, I know for, for certain, has been, excuse me?
I think, I think it's also good to explain that you do use temporary employees as well before you go into the vendor side of it as well.
We do, yes, we do use temporary employees. But for the most part, we're, we employ those employees on the backs of trucks where we're in the yard waste that, that are able to throw bags. But when, when you start talking about operating a yard waste vehicle in neighborhoods around, around parked cars, tight spaces, just think about your neighborhood and some of the neighborhoods where there's cars on both sides of the street, there's trash cans, there's little kids, basketball hoop sometimes. There's, there's a lot to navigate. And so it's, it's not, it's not something that just everybody can do, that we can just pick them up off the street and put them in a truck, even if they have the experience driving. It takes a little bit of time, which is why we start them out on one type of truck and move them to the next, to the next, to the next. But yes, sir, it, it's our goal to do whatever we can to, to make it happen. It's, it's not a lack of, in this particular case, it's not a lack of revenue. It's not that we don't have the funds to be able to take the actions. Where we're struggling is the ability to recruit and to retain. That's where we're, that's where we're having a problem at the moment.
Thank you.
Anybody else on any other topic?
Srida. I wanted to address a topic of the body's consideration on a referendum. I know some people may not want to talk about a referendum right now, but this is a referendum or discussion about a referendum to increase possible services to residents, considering possibly, and I'll go into that in more detail, but possibly with our parks, open space and modernization of some of our other rec centers. But to also collaborate and include a rec center for District Seven by referendum. And so in some, doing some research, some of you already know, referendums have been issued for bonds to build rec centers, Lynn Haven, Bayside, Princess Anne, and then also renovating Bow Creek, that particular facility. But I'd like to pose to the body to consider the referendum. That can be something for everyone. Again, it could be a referendum to include the Virginia Beach Trails Project extending that. Also looking at currently modernizing our parks and recs plan, Great Neck, Bayside, Princess Anne and SeaTac facilities. And so we know all of those facilities need to be updated. Maintenance needs to occur. And so while doing that, while considering possibly extending the VB Trails Park project to provide more services to the community, you can do so with considering a referendum for the people to consider on the ballot. And so just doing some research and talking to staff, there's certainly a way we can get it done this year, to be on the November ballot. We do have time to do it, because I'm sure, as you know, many of you have heard my conversations about the rec center for District Seven, so you're well acquainted with that need. You're also well acquainted with all of the other needs, as I've mentioned previously. One of the areas I also asked the staff to look at is what would be probably the most considerable location for a District Seven recreational center? And that was the Charles Town Park facility that's located on Centerville. And so that's a possible site. That's a most recommended site, because I know some folks in the conversation wanted to know, well, where would it go? So that's part of the discussion, looking at where it would go. But just wanted to make sure council was aware of what my thought process was for you to kind of consider a referendum of that nature. Certainly, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it, this information with you later privately or to, you know, as a body, we can certainly discuss it. And so as I mentioned, from now up until August the 15th, I believe, or the 18th, if we were to consider it for this year, for November's election, the body would have to approve a question for the referendum by August 18th. It's, again, certainly something that's doable. Please certainly consider that for this year. The other option would be to have the citizens do a petition that they lead for the question to present to the circuit court, the clerk of the court, and gain petitions, signatures, and then have that question placed on the ballot by getting a certain amount of support from, from the electorate. So those are the two options that I am looking at and considering. We wanted you to also be aware, certainly happy to talk to those who are interested and who have an appetite for such a measure going forward.
Anybody else? Oh, yeah?
I just wanted to thank the staff that came out for our Community Day on July 12. We had a really good group that I asked for it to be District Four specific. And the people came out, were able to listen and some of it take responsibility of how you do what you do. Besides that, we also said something special to the Chief of Fire. He was there and I had talked with Councilman Remick about what happened. So he wrote me a little thing and I read it out and we all stood and clapped for him. He mentioned how it was 1,500 degrees when they checked, that they have a thermal way of checking things. Seventy-five fire people out there and also no one was killed. So that is just showing you the quality and caliber of people that we have dedicated, what, six, seven or more hours than the next day.
Or does that mean one hour?
Yeah, so I want to, you know, say publicly, even though I wasn't right there, at least we were able to reach out to Councilmember Remick, who said more about it for me to read. And the next thing also at my counsel, Dr. Scott Miller and his vice president Keith were there to make comments and how Virginia Wesleyan really works with us in different aspects. And then somebody else came, which was Ishan from the Minority Business Council. So we're able to bring those people to the table and just had a really good interaction with the Community Day. The second thing, I only have two today, was having to go out to the sportsplex out of Princess Anne and see the field hockey group. One of them, like one, got to take some pictures with them. We had an Olympian out there. We had an Olympian out there, Liz Chu, and just talk with them, and definitely there seemed to be a need, and later on we can discuss, about putting those two people. So many of the college students from all over, and they do lacrosse and many others, and they mentioned how important having an artificial turf, you know, was to them during this time. So those are two areas. The reason I'm mentioning that, you know, it's for Princess Anne, is because where they live, while they're here, for like June, July, they had over 26,000 nights in District Four, the Holiday Inn, the Home Sweet, Hilton Gardens, and so. So that's the second area now, not just for the oceanfront, but also in the central park that you can have this pool set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. Yes, as we were finishing our formal and informal sessions last Tuesday, a week ago, we were all getting texts and information about a fire at the Oceanfront, 26th Street. And after the session, I went home and changed and went down, and thanks to Chief Privates and Chief Nadelka with EMS, so fire EMS and police, 75 firemen and women, and then a, a number of EMS folks were standing by to help as needed, as well as police. Truly a heroic effort, a three-alarm fire. I don't think anyone that I've spoken with so far, past week, recalls the last time the city has had a three-alarm fire, which is a, a really big fire. It requires a lot of equipment and personnel, so hats off, and many thanks to the heroes in public safety that serve our city. It was a bad situation, but they kept it at bay.
Thank you. Josh?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And I, I would just like to add on to Councilwoman Ross Hammond's comments about the sports flex facility. I also had an opportunity to visit, and, you know, I, I took a drive around that parking lot, and I looked at license plates on a packed parking lot from literally all over, all over the place, up and down the East Coast and beyond. So when you talk about tourism impacts, I had no idea. But it, there really is significant impact there. And, and I also see it, as I mentioned earlier, I maintain an office in Town Center, in One Columbus Center, and right next to One Columbus Center in District Four is the Hilton Garden Inn, and I park in that garage across the street, and there are constantly, all summer long, people in soccer and, and field hockey uniforms in those elevators and in the parking garage, and walking around and dining and exploring our city. So it, it is, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I also had a really enjoyable.
Especially, one of them asked me if I ever played sports. I said, yeah, I played golf and lacrosse. And they said, oh, they say.
Right.
You did one? Yep, I remember playing against Penn State.
Did they find you a jersey?
Michael, did you have something?
I did. Well, Councilmember Remick's comments about the fire were, were well-stated and made me think about an experience that I had this weekend that I just wanted to share with the body. Had a chance to go on a ride-along with our EMS, with my friend Jeff Henderson, who on that shift was, they call EMS three, one of the supervisors. And I just, it's not the first time I've been on an EMS ride-along. I want to encourage each of you to do that, to take them up on the opportunity to do that. It's really amazing. As you know, we have one of the most unique EMS systems in the country with largely volunteer system who are supported by professional EMS providers and staff. And, you know, much like Councilmember Remick was stating about the response to the fire, each and every time a citizen in Virginia Beach calls 911, our EMS volunteers and staff, along with fire and police, respond to those emergency situations with, with professional training, expertise, compassion. It's, we're very fortunate in Virginia Beach to have a system like that, to have the men and women who do that job working on our behalf to keep us safe. And I just wanted to thank them for the, the things that I saw that day. But I also am delivering a message that they wanted me to share with you, which is to say, come ride with them. Come ride with them and, and see how the system works. You, you see parts of our city that are underserved, and you see parts of our city that are very well-served, but they're all equally served by our public safety professionals. And it's a great way to see our city, it's a great way to learn about our city and the people who serve, the people who live and visit here. I strongly recommend you take them up on it.
Well said. Anybody else? Okay. Mrs. Henley has graciously offered to do the general review.
So looking at the resolutions, does anyone see a resolution that you need to have pulled or audences? Is there speakers on anything tonight, is there?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have any speakers on anything tonight. Speakers? So all of these ordinances and resolutions, agenda? Looking at planning, we have four items, all of them are short-term rentals. The first one, fourth is LLC, 60423, District Six, consent. Second one, ordinance LLC, also short-term rental, 60620th Street, District Six.
Consent, please.
And the next two, request deferral to August 15. Problem with deferring those two. So all of these can be on consent agenda, so it looks like that's one vote. Everything's on consent. Unless someone comes to speak.
All right, so now I'm going to read the call for closed session. I'm going to take a break. Does that sound good?
One.
The chair, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the closed session pursuant to the exemption from open deals allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. One is public contract discussion of the award of a public contract involving the miniature public funds and discussions of the term of state such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiation strategy of public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29. And that's projects. Perspective business of industry, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, the expansion of an existing business or industry where the previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or extends its facilities in the community pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A5. That's project as well. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters regarding requiring revision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.3-3711A8. And it's a load, 7B environmental review, and the sports center contract issue. Personnel matters, discussions, considerations, interviews, prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. Counsel appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointments. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we are in closed session.
I'm sorry, I need to do the roll.
Okay.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilwoman Henley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Holthausen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lerman?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.